What was his first name? I, Mr. Wheeler.
Siles.
Yeah, there we go. Pardon?
Siles Wheeler.
Si, yeah, Si Wheeler, yeah. Well, I think we're, uh, we're up on the screen. And, uh, planning board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded for broadcasts at a later time. We'll call this one the order. We have a quorum for Robert's rules and, um, I recognize that two people are out and it may be advantageous in some way to postpone it, but it's also advantageous to keep going. Um, I don't see anything on this agenda that's particularly volatile. If we come to something, we can make a consideration on the individual subject rather than wipe the whole agenda away. That's my recommendation, so that's, unless someone has strong feelings about it, that's what we'll try to do.
You just have to ask it. In November, Ken couldn't make the meeting, so the meeting was canceled and postponed for a week. And now you have two people who can't make the meeting and, uh...
Well, that's not really accurate, Ed.
Okay.
What happened in November, or I think it was October.
October.
Kendall warned us, uh, a month in advance that he couldn't make that, that night. And we rescheduled it at the time he notified us, not at the last minute. It wasn't because we had a meeting and he didn't show up. So I'll call an order, review and approve previous minutes. We probably could put that aside, not having their comments. Uh, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, we can postpone it.
Yeah. Um, we discourage emailing that stuff in. We really do it in person, so. Likewise, we go down the member assignments. Craig was working on scenic roads. And I think, it doesn't say it on the agenda, but along with that goes things like the, um, scenic tree or... What's the tree law?
Scenic road is part of it.
Scenic roads and then something tree.
There are shade trees.
Shade Tree Act, yeah, the Shade Tree Act. And, um, some inter-board communication there. He was working on that and I thought he was getting close. Uh, Bill volunteered to work with him on that, so I hope they've made some good progress. We'll hear that next time. Bill Holman's, uh, follow-up with the annual gravel pit report. And he said that he, uh, last time he got into the files and now he's probably making even more progress, I hope. So we'll wait for him next time. Alice, you did a great job on the fees and you handed in a cover letter, excuse me, a cover letter and a table of, um, the fees as we last, as a board established them in 2000. And then the fees of 2000 carried forward by a consumer price index factor. And then kind of a recommendation because you rounded them all.
Right.
And I've attached the table to the meeting minutes so that the whole public could see it. But you also had a cover letter, so I'm gonna hand that item over to you for the report.
Alice, just so you know, your packet is the third one in their packets, so it looks like this.
Always come organized and by ten minutes into the meeting, I'm like, oh.
Yes, that's the packet.
Aye, aye, yes, okay.
The third one has her...
Third pile down.
All right.
Great.
I'm happy, happy to take it on. Um, so, the consumer price index, this is for, not, you know, it's broken out there, many consumer price indexes, but this is the national one compiled by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Prices since night, uh, since the last time this was done have, uh, to 2018, 2000 to 2018 went up forty-six point eight six percent. So all I did was round them up. Um, and that's, the red numbers show how much you add. And then I did round off because, you know, you don't wanna fee that's, you know, sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents generally. So, that was it. Um, but then there's this process and there's also a whole bunch of other fees that I didn't look at. So, I mean, I did look at, but I didn't include. So this is only the approval not required plans, preliminary subdivision, definitive subdivision, special permits, site plan, and then copy the zoning bylaw rules and regulations. So there are other fees. Some of them are set into the bylaw. For example, the solar rotate application is 2000 and it's written right in there. So you would have to go, you know, you'd have to use a different process for them. I also think that we should establish for the scenic roads some kind of a fee with the application because somebody's gotta be paid to go out and inspect those sites, right? Are we adding to the tree ward and stuff? But I didn't take that on, so this is just basic, bring the, these basic fees into line. So, the A and R, the preliminary and subdivision plans are all part of the subdivision rules and regulations. And I said, which is true, there is a statute that governs amending, um, subdivision rules and regulations and they require notice and a hearing, which was followed last time. But when you read this further, it says, the notice doesn't have to be published in the newspaper if a city and town doesn't have a newspaper. So, this is actually comes, comes via Christina, uh, from, from Joyce, right. So we can, um, all that's required of us, if there is no such newspaper in such city or town, is to post such notice in a conspicuous place in the city or town hall for a period of not less than fourteen days before the date of the hearing. So you do have to have a hearing, you do have to post. And Christina and I had talked, uh, thought a little bit about it. What Joyce does is always publish them in town hall and then we put them on the website.
She said that an agenda item, uh, that's sufficiently detailed and published fourteen days in advance gives the town plenty of notice.
By published, you mean on our website?
On our website. And then all of ours that are on our website are also quote posted in town hall. Joyce has a board, so there's a physical representation too.
Okay.
Now, the other, the other two classes of fees, so that's those, the subdivision rules and regulations. The site plan and special permit fees are part of the, um, zoning bylaws. But, and you know, zoning bylaws generally require a town hall meeting to amend, but these don't because the amount of the fee wasn't set forth in them. They said fee to be established by the planning board.
And we must've?
So we did, and at the same time, and that's duly noted in it. So, so there's slightly, so I had done these motions, uh, you know, a proposed motion so that we get it right.
Yeah.
Um, and I did three motions, thinking the procedure for each of these is a little bit different. We can still do it as three motions if you want. Um, but I, I think if we're gonna have a hearing, and it doesn't have to go in the paper, you're just gonna post it, you could also say, and a hearing on increasing the, um, the filing fee for site plan submission and special permits. Cause it wouldn't do us any harm. I was thinking it would, you know, it would cost us more to publish them in the paper, but...
I was also looking at our forms for those. Um, they haven't been updated since 2001, so...
Does it, does it state the fee on it? I don't think they did. I think I looked at, looked at those.
No, they don't have this, uh, fee on, uh, fee on them, but some of them say, like, the deed dated and then they have the blank for nineteen blank blank as opposed to 2000. So it just might be worth, um, reviewing those.
Or that's our, our next big adventure. But anyway, if you, if you, the board members present are ready to, to make a motion, I'll make a motion to increase these fees. Maybe, oh, there's one more thing that I need to say that wasn't here. And that was, with the preliminary plan, the subdivision fee was twenty-five dollars per lot with a hundred dollar minimum. And the proposed increase is thirty-five dollars a lot with a hundred and fifty minimum. But, the fee for a definitive plan was just at two hundred dollars per lot with no minimum. And all of the other ones we looked at, the models from around, most of the boards did have a minimum. So if you were to keep that in scale, what I was proposing is two hundred and fifty dollars a lot, which is the rounded up for the CPI, with a thousand dollar minimum.
I thought that was the definitive plan.
Yeah, the definitive plan.
Oh, okay.
Did I say that?
I'm, I'm not sure.
The definitive plan. So the preliminary plan, which is, you know, your sketch of what you're gonna do, basically, um, twenty-five dollars a lot with a hundred minimum, going up to thirty-five per lot with one hundred and fifty minimum. And your definitive plan, which then requires a lot more work on our part, I do believe, right? Goes up from two hundred dollars a lot with no minimum to two fifty a lot with a thousand dollar minimum.
All right.
So you may disagree with that. I don't know what the thinking was, why they'd have a minimum on one and not another, but that was the way it was.
Could I just ask a question? Um, we have a list of proposed fees. And I'm trying to correlate that to the proposed motions. So I see an A and R filing fee.
Do you have the permit small, can you put that in?
Yes. Is that in the motions?
Yes. Yeah, this, this would be my motion to, because you could, see, here was my thinking, Tom, was this require, this statutorily requires notice to amend the subdivision rules and regulations. So that's why it's one motion. These, the, to amend the zoning board, because of the way it's written, the fee can be set by the planning board, does not require posted notice.
All right.
So the procedure was different, so I wrote them differently.
And I, I think that's wonderful, except what I'm trying to do is say, how do we change the A and R filing fee? A simple vote on the board's part?
After hearing.
All right.
So the motion is just to...
If there's going to be a hearing, excuse me.
Yes. The motion would be, I move the planning board hold a public hearing as required by, for the purpose of amending, see? But the others, when we can amend tonight if you want.
But, my question is, I, in these motions, which I presume would be posted?
No, they're for us tonight.
Okay. Well, then, I don't see a motion that relates to A and R. Do I?
Yes.
Which one?
See, section four oh, these are the zoning rules and regulations. Section four oh one, to increase the submittal fee for a plan believed not to require approval.
You spelled it out and I didn't pick it up.
Yeah.
Thank you for pointing that out. So then I go down to preliminary and definitive, they're there. Special permit fee is there. Um, site plan is there. What is the zoning bylaws, twenty-five dollars?
Those are just copies.
Oh, that's copies of paper.
And I think the clerk said that, we don't need to...
We could even take it off this list, cause it's not really a fee, you know, it's a charge for a piece of paper.
You got, you got two things going though. One is, we need to actually post these fees somewhere because I had a devil of a time finding them. So that's what, sort of, you take out that column and you've adjusted. And I would leave those in, what'll cost you to get copies. But I don't think we have to vote on it, just get Joyce to agree to it.
Then, one more question is, last meeting, we produced a document from the year 2000, which was the list of all the fees.
Right.
Are all the fees that are on the list in 2000, which I don't have in front of me, accounted for in this plan of action for these fees?
Except the, uh, yes, except for the copies of the zoning regulations, the copies.
That's fine. That's, as I said, that's kind of a fee, but it's not the same kind of a fee from an applicant, you know? So, uh, let's look at the motions and see if we can...
I guess the big question here is, do you wanna do them all at the same time or do you wanna go ahead and approve and vote on actually changing the fee? We have to have the hearing on the subdivision rule and regulations, but we don't on the other two have to have a hearing. So, we could, we could amend the second motions or present them, since they haven't really been presented, to move that the planning board hold a hearing on, if you want.
Items A, items B, items C, but...
All of them, if you want.
But, are all of them?
Well, that's the question. Do you wanna just limit it to the planning board? That's, the statute requires we do that. I mean, to the subdivision rules and regulations? Or do, and vote the other two through tonight, or do you wanna vote them all through at the same time?
I feel that would be a little bit neater when we're updating it, we could put the revision date on it, as opposed to two of them get revised on this date and then we have to put through a new fee schedule. And then we wait another month and then we have, a month later, three more get revised. I think it would be neater to do them all at once, but that's just my opinion.
That's fine, and your opinion's valued.
So we, I'll just modify the second two motions to say, move that the planning board, again, hold a public hearing on. It's not required, but we can hold a public hearing on anything we want.
On the other hand, we don't have to.
No.
What do we do if the public hearing says, everybody refuses to, um, raise the approval not required fee? And the board votes to approve it?
We all get that explanation.
Then we're in conflict.
We're unpopular in town.
Well, I don't know if it's unpopular, it's a small fee and it's used six times a year.
I don't think anybody's gonna object to the CPI increase, Steve.
Yeah. Well, I don't, and you failed to mention one thing that I think you covered in your letter. You failed to mention tonight, one thing that you covered in your letter, was that even in the raised condition, all the fees that are being proposed on this table are, are lower than, uh, the fees of surrounding towns or the, the high fees of the surrounding towns. Not all surrounding towns, but were, were not as high as the higher ones.
Way lower than some of the higher ones.
Yeah, significantly lower. And, uh, for that reason, I think the fees are fair. Cause, I mean, our job is to be fair. Fair to the town, fair to our own board, the process work, and fair to the applicant. So, I'd be in favor of adopting the fees and, and I really don't have a hang-up on the, the process by which we get there. The more public and open, maybe the better.
Well, let's, um, we need to move the first motion anyway, so I'll make it. Because that starts the ball rolling and we can't change those fees without a hearing. So the motion reads, yeah, um, I move that the planning board hold a public hearing as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one Q, for the purpose of amending the following provisions of the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Hubbardston, Massachusetts, all relating to fees, Section four point zero one, to increase the submittal fee for a plan believed not to require approval, that's an A and R plan, from one hundred and seventy-five dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars, to amend Section five point zero one, to increase the filing fee for submission of a preliminary subdivision plan from twenty-five dollars per lot, a hundred dollar minimum, to thirty-five dollars per lot with a hundred and fifty dollar minimum. And to amend Section six, to increase the filing fee for the submission of a definitive plan from two hundred dollars per lot to two hundred and fifty dollars per lot with a thousand dollar minimum.
So I'd, uh, need a second and then we'll move to a discussion.
Seconded.
Okay, so it's seconded, moved and seconded? I, I, can I just, um, I have one question. Does MGL forty-one eighty-one Q govern the approval not required fee?
Yes, because approval not required is part of, is, it's embedded in the rules and regulations governing subdivision in Hubbardston. So, it does.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I understood what you were saying with regards to the definitive subdivision fee. The existing fees are currently two hundred and fifty and a thousand minimum.
No. Existing fee is two hundred dollars per lot, no minimum.
Do you have the table?
Okay, because the proposed planning board fee schedule that was sent out says that if currently the existing fee is two hundred and fifty dollars per lot, a thousand minimum, and that the proposed fee should be three hundred and fifty dollars and fifteen hundred dollars minimum. That's why I'm bringing this up to your attention.
Did I miss that? Do you, are you looking at the fee schedule that was published?
It's in the meeting minutes.
No, this is in the, in the agenda.
It's the agenda, okay.
Not the meeting.
I'm sorry, it's the agenda. I said meeting minutes, I meant the agenda.
Help me out here, Christina.
Here's what the agenda shows.
The agenda.
That's what you gave to the board on the email.
The planning board fee, oh, two fifty per lot to bridge it.
Just wanna make sure that you're stating the right, this is, motion.
That's the same, Ed.
You're right, there's, let me, let me see where I have, maybe there is that memo. Do you have?
There's a copy there if you want.
Yeah, that, I do have that. What I'm thinking is, what is the fee at the present?
That's the same as what we're looking at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, though, yeah. Wait a minute, I've got it here somewhere. A little deeper.
Do you have the old fee schedule from the last meeting we had?
I do not have it on the...
Is it on the meeting minutes?
I have it, I have it right here.
In front of me, and it does say that the definitive subdivision filing fee on the planning board fee schedule that was submitted as part of the minutes from the last meeting, it says that the subdivision filing fee for definitive was two hundred and fifty dollars per lot and then it goes up to one thousand minimum.
You're right, I have to amend this. I apologize. This came to me after I'd done my own research and I hadn't seen this. So this is the one that was there, sub, definitive subdivision, two fifty per lot, one thousand minimum.
Right.
So we should go to three fifty with a fourteen...
We're talking about the existing fee column.
Right, that's incorrect.
Is there an error in the existing fee column? And if there is, could you just point it out to me?
No, that's right.
That's what I thought.
That's right. But this is, was stated wrong in my motion.
All right. But the table accurately reflects what you wanna say about the past.
Yes.
And does the table accurately say what you wanna say about the future?
Yeah, three fifty and three, yeah. I need to fix this.
So this table isn't, doesn't contain an error?
No.
The words in the motion.
The motion continues here.
All right, so let's work on the words.
All right, so, so we need to fix Section six, to increase the filing fee for submission of a definitive plan from two fifty per lot with a thousand dollar minimum. I am sorry, guys.
Don't be sorry, it's fine.
Thought I checked this a million times. Two, what did we say in my chart?
Three fifty.
Three fifty.
Three hundred and fifty dollars for the per lot and fifteen hundred?
Yes.
Minimum.
Minimum.
Per lot with a fifteen hundred dollar minimum. Okay, so it's ten times what the preliminary plan is, actually, which makes sense because...
Yeah, it might be ten lots, so, okay.
Well, I'm sorry, okay, so, with that correct, so my correction would be, and then I guess...
So you only really need to reread the last bulleted point.
So to amend my former motion, so then you can second as amend and write the amendment, to read, Section six, to increase the filing fee for submission of a definitive plan from two hundred and fifty per lot with a thousand dollar minimum, to three hundred and fifty dollars per lot with a fifteen hundred dollar minimum.
Can I have a second?
I can second that.
Okay. Um, let's vote that particular motion, get it over with.
Okay.
So, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. And we move down to, well, actually, what we do is, what are we gonna do with this motion? This gets posted?
It'll be a part of the meeting.
Or noticed?
It'll be, we put it as part of the meeting minutes.
Right.
And then as far as, um, posting this, we have to just make sure that the agenda for the next meeting is out fourteen days in advance of the meeting and contains the verbiage that we will be, um, voting on the fees and I'll, I'll send you an email contained within the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land division in Hubbardston.
All right. Would you draft that up for me?
I will.
And I'll come over to you and...
Yep.
Sign it off and we'll, we'll get it physically posted, as you said.
And, and on the internet.
And we can put it on the internet. I'm not sure it has to be in the agenda. It has to be posted on our website, right?
Right. Well, I mean, the way it was stated by Joyce was that an agenda item would be a posting.
Good.
Because that way, um, people pay attention to the items and they'll know what's being done at the meeting.
Yep.
So she said that having an agenda item posted fourteen days in advance would do it.
So we could actually put out an agenda with that one item on it, if we had to.
And then just amend the rest.
And then amend the agenda later to include other items.
Yeah.
So that's what we'll do. And fourteen days prior, we will put out an agenda for the next meeting that contains that motion.
Okay.
Very good. Thanks for administratively figuring all that out.
And Christine, I think the posting date cannot count as one of the fourteen.
No, I know, you said that. There was a concept that if fourteen days later, it's the date, it doesn't count, we have to go to the next month.
Let's target eighteen days.
Right.
Doesn't cost us anything. All right, so, Alice, take us to the next motion.
So the next motion, I can move it, uh, but the question is, if we move it as written, it's done. Do you wanna do that? Or do you wanna take it up?
You mean it would not include public review?
Right. Or do you want to...
Be a component to that meeting.
Uh, let's, um...
Or I can modify it.
Let's, let's move that we post it.
For fourteen days?
Yes.
Okay.
And, or, or, I'm asking, I'm, I guess we should make a motion and discuss it, but I'd make a motion that we include a public review of these other two motions, even though we don't have to, I guess is the words. And, um, that these would be included in the, uh, other notification.
Well, so, how would you say, you could say, you could read it just as it reads and then say, after a public hearing? Or after public review, what do you wanna say?
How did we say it in the first one? Hold a public hearing?
Yeah.
I don't wanna hold a public hearing.
Okay.
Because that's, that's a, a certain terminology.
After.
As, as posted for fourteen days.
After...
After fourteen days of notification.
Notification to the public.
Yes. And the same words, I guess, would be used for the next one down.
Okay.
We can move them both at the same time, make one motion to put them both up as notif, notifying the public and then, uh, they would pass after, after the next meeting.
Okay, so should I read it that way?
Please.
See if Christina can do this? Uh, I move that the planning board pursuant to Article two, Article nine point two of the Town of Hubbardston zoning bylaws, increase the filing fee for a site plan review submission from one hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And, increase the filing fee for special permits in Article seven point two. I'm already getting myself tied up here, wait a minute.
You should say, and pursuant to Article seven.
Okay.
Don't start of the increase, start of pursuant.
And pursuant to Article seven point two of the Town of Hubbardston zoning bylaws, increase the filing fee for a, for a special permit application from one hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and twenty-five dollars after a fourteen day notification to the public.
Both of these will be valid after a fourteen day? Cause I mean, if we have this very long sentence, you might wanna stop it and then just say both of them are valid.
We don't have to re-vote them.
No, no, we don't, we, what we, what I would hope we could do is post this for fourteen days. We will have a public hearing on the top motion, top, no, the top, top motion, big one. In the next, Alice, in the next, in the next meeting, we're gonna hold a public hearing for the top one.
Yes.
After that public hearing closes, I'll say, I'll introduce these two other fees. And if the public is there and they have any strong feelings about it, like to understand it. Otherwise, we'll vote that night to move them, to, to accept them.
Okay.
What we're voting for tonight, the motion tonight, is to post them for fourteen days. Are you following me?
Okay. It's a little bit ambiguous, but...
Well, all right, then, I'll make the motion. I make the motion that we post the, the...
Proposed.
Site plan submission and special permit application fee notification for fourteen days concurrent with the, never mind, for fourteen days, and that, um, these fees will be moved and adopted at the, planned to move and adopt them at the next meeting. Is that reasonable?
Okay.
I wanna rope the public in, give them a chance to talk about it. And if no one shows up or no one comments are made, then they'll pass to the next meeting. Is that fair?
So give you sufficient notice for what you're gonna post?
Yes.
Okay.
You got the wording for the, uh...
Yep.
Okay. Let's label them, we need to label them motion A, B, C or something, or...
It's gonna be, um, basically just number, I have number one and number two, cause the last two were put together.
You're right, okay. Good. Is that fair to the public?
The only issue with that second, um, verbiage is that it does not include the amount of money that they're being increased from or to.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
She read it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
From one fifty to three twenty-five.
I was taking yours, cause you were making a motion, I didn't know we were amending hers.
I think it reads, I move that the planning board pursuant to Article nine two of the, and I'm just reading it.
Right.
You get down to the money and then you go, and pursuant to Article seven point two, blah, 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 through the money, after fourteen days of public notification.
Okay. Yep.
It's one motion, so you don't need to say fourteen days twice.
Right.
I think that's fair to the public and fair to the town and get us rolling. And Alice?
Yeah.
Did a great job. Thank you very much.
Oh, thanks, sorry about the one error here. Try hard and still make errors.
Christina, you're digging into the background on how to do it. Very good. Thank you.
Do the final vote?
Oh, um, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right.
Moved as amended, I accept your friendly amendment, right?
I'll second that.
All right, and all in favor of notification?
Aye. Aye.
Of doing that notification motion. Thanks, Ed. Keep us straight here. Get all wrapped around ourselves. All right, returning to, excuse me, I gotta get a glass of water. Returning to the agenda. Ken Daly's noise report, if that could happen. You got anything for us?
I found nothing in the general of zoning bylaws. So I went out and I've talked to a number of people in the town. And they would like very much to see a, um, bylaw that prohibits or, not the word prohibit, I mean.
Not prohibit, but, uh, regulate or.
Regulate the, regulate the noise.
All right, in, in fairness to Bill Holmans, who was, served in, as a policeman and made a comment last time that
Yes.
the enforcement of such a thing was a little difficult. And, um, did you happen to talk to the police chief?
I've been trying to get him, I haven't been able to.
Okay.
So what I've been doing is speeding up another sixty-eight.
Trying to attract attention.
I will make a, a point to get him to see him, yep.
Yeah, we have to do that, yeah. I, I think that's a, a base we have to touch.
Yep, absolutely, we do.
Dr. Sad, have you, did you come across a proposed, like a model for a noise ordinance? I know you get, you submitted, I read through your materials. But have you seen what other towns have done on that?
Actually, I have not. But I will do that.
Yeah, I'd recommend.
Or we can get, we can get Christina to help us with that too.
Yeah, something like Westminster, Barry, Gardner, kind of a sampling, you mean?
Yep.
Yeah, so we have something to consider.
Something that we can look at and say, and then put, put together for ourselves.
And, and if a town doesn't have one, that's an important data point, too.
I haven't been able to find one. And I think it was Bill that had said years ago, there was one, or there there were work, it was being worked on and nothing ever came of it.
I believe, if my memory serves me right, I believe what he said was, um, the noise ordinance was under the, uh, umbrella of the Board of Health. And then it kind of went away and I don't know how that process worked, but I think that's what he said.
Yeah, I can be right.
We can check with them next time. If you come in with some examples and, uh, talk to the chief. When Bill's back, we'll tap into him and, uh, get his whole opinion on it.
Okay.
Ken, if you'd like, I'll look at the local town, the surrounding towns for those and send those to you in an email.
Okay.
Okay.
That'd be great, thank you.
I bet the big guys like Leamester and Pittsburgh have them, but.
Gardner too, possibly.
Possibly, yeah. But check with Westminster, they have a, they have a pretty good operation down there.
Christina, another, if you don't mind. If, if you come across these bylaws also, see if the fee is incorporated in them for violating them. And who's in charge of enforcing them? You know, I don't know what. Sometimes they're listed in separate places, you know, so if you find this noise bylaw and it's under a Board of Health regulation, let us know that that's where it came from or if it's under.
And who's responsible for enforcing it?
And the fee.
Yep.
The fine.
Yep.
Because if you don't have fines, you're not gonna be able to enforce it, I think.
Well, it takes more than fines, it actually takes an enforcement a party that is responsible for, we have lots of fines in town, but.
I know.
There's no enforcement.
So the bylaw should specify both.
Yes. And, um, I won't impose this on you, Christina, but when you do find people that have, um, the bylaws and that they do have some enforcement mechanism, would you feed that over to Kendall? And Kendall, I'd like you to talk to the authority that is the enforcer and say, how's it go? You know?
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's a good idea.
We might look at all this paperwork and find wonderful paperwork. And in reality, it's, so, so you need to almost interview them, you know, think of a couple to answer your questions and and figure out what's going on behind the paperwork. Okay. Economic development and CPA fund status. I'll start with the CPA, that's easier. Um, aren't the planning board representative to the CPA meeting? And, uh, I missed the last one, I think, because they coincided with our last meeting. But I'm gonna try to get to the chairman. Two things. There's a question in my mind about the CPA borrowing capability, I don't think it affects us in any way, but, uh, I'm gonna talk to him about it. And later on in this meeting, we will talk about the, um, CPA funds as it relates to the affordable housing issue. Alice has an item on that, we'll do that later, though. The other thing I did was I went to a organization that works on master plans. And I went to them and I said, could you help us with the master plan? And I volunteered and I said, I think I can get some CPA money to do that. And the person, uh, researched that a little bit for us and she came back and said, no, you cannot use CPA, in fact, she had a letter from this, uh, Attorney General or somebody. No, you cannot use CPA funds to fund adminis- town administrative work. So that wonderful idea, uh, went for naught, but I made it valiant effort. So that's it for CPA. Or under the economic development report, I told you I was going to try to see how the Economic Development Committee in town may be, um, revived. There were three members, I don't know their status. But I, I, uh, serendipitously, uh, met with Todd Miller, the regional economic development guy, who was meeting with Katie Young and a third person who, I'm sorry, I can't remember her name. But they are pulling together a, um, economic development effort. And my hats off to them, I applaud their effort and I, I've asked them to have a, when, when they have their next meeting, to publish it as a regular public meeting. And so then we might be able to draw in some more public, uh, to get on board with the economic development efforts. I provided them some information and they're, they're, um, working on it, but it was just really nice to see that something's starting. We need some, some, uh, uh, basic economic development activity. That's it for my two little reports. Yes, Ed?
Uh, before we move on to that item, uh, does, does that mean that the fifty thousand dollars that the town voted for CPA funds for, for the planning board will be returned to the CPA?
That is the item that I said we will discuss in the future on the meeting minutes. That's what Alice and Christina have researched and I'm prepared to discuss that, but it's farther down on the agenda. Can I just ask you to hang on?
I see it, I didn't see it.
Um, where is it, it's right, uh?
It starts with affordable housing, savings and accounts.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We should number them maybe, because we have so many.
Okay.
But, uh,
Sure.
We're at correspondence, so it's two more items after that. Correspondence.
You're gonna skip the master plan updates?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I don't want to. Attached to the meeting minutes should be the master plan chapters list, it's attachment number three. And, um, I think we can whip down, well, let, let me ask the general question. Has anybody made any progress?
Um, I have, I have a little bit of things to report.
Good.
Which I was assigned the capital improvement and the long-range facility plan, so I talked to Ryan about both of those. And he's really working on reconstituting the capital improvement committee. And also, we're jump-starting the, he says, with the long-range planning facility, you know, there was this plan that was done that put a price towards the improvements in town needed.
Is that the one that prioritized the, did you read it?
Right, right.
That prioritized the library and the safety building and all that?
Safety building and the senior center and so on, and with numbers, and that, so he's putting together, um, uh, a group that's gonna investigate what to do with that report, to come up with some recommendations, what we can do to go forward. So he, he said, please wait till after the first of the year and he'll get back to me.
I believe Bill Murray, our planning board agent guy from places, was pretty instrumental in that effort. And you might talk to him.
I think maybe Ryan's already talking to him, but.
All right, well, I'm just offering it up as.
I'll, I'll ask. In which, in the putting together of the long-range facility?
In the long-range facilities plan, he was instrumental in the last report.
Okay.
I believe he had a pretty, uh, large contribution to that.
Okay, I have read the report, but, but anyway. Also, um, so that was, and then the school, I have the school and they're waiting to let, they said to wait until they had some resolution on um, what they're gonna do about the declining populations and redistributing.
Yeah, that's the Quim
Student.
urban regional effort.
Right, right. And I haven't actually contacted the Volk School person and I need to do that. But I also thought, um, the idea sort of brought up, and, and then I had emailed the other people I had and I've heard nothing. But.
You had, you had, uh, let's just note them.
I had a historical commission.
You had the historical commission. And seniors, I think.
And council, council on aging. Aging. Right. And I think, Christine and I talked about this is, uh, a little bit, about maybe we'd get a better response if we put together a, you know, a suggested format, what we're really looking for from these people. And so I, 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 I don't know, I thought maybe we can make a motion that, that the board with help of Christina, develop a suggested format for the town boards and committee chairs to respond to the planning board's request for input to the master plan. I just think if you send something to them, that what you're looking for, you're more likely to get some, some consistency and, and just get a response. And if you just say suggested, then you're not saying you have to do it this way.
I think there's two things, I think there is, um, when we, when we passed out the chapters list, it didn't quite look like this, there was a chapters list and then next to it, there were a series of paragraphs.
Yes.
And those paragraphs were a real tightly-written synopsis of what might be written up. And then there is, of course, the old report, the old master plan.
However.
The old master plan is not helpful, I've read it.
It's not very, it doesn't segment it in the same way we're trying to with the chapters. Um, I actually was hoping to find just the building plan and hand that over to the building department and say, please do it like this. But it's fragmented and all in there what they brought in to the last plan. So I was, I, it's, I found, had a hard time asking Patty what I expected of her, even when I showed her that list, what I expected from her with regards to what she could contribute to the master plan.
I'll have to look at the old plan, I thought it was more, gonna be more helpful than that, but I haven't read it in a while, probably haven't read it in two years.
Well, if we did this suggested format, I'm not suggesting that it gets sent out, I'm suggesting that it come back here to be looked at.
Let's put it on the agenda for next month and, and
Okay.
Put it on the wall and we'll all read it and
Okay.
see if we can make it better and, and then get it out.
So you want a motion, you want my little motion, you want to second it or you just wanna?
Uh, I'll, I'll do whatever you think is appropriate.
Well, here's my little motion, it's quick to vote on and then she's got it. I move that the board with help of Christina, develop a suggested format for town board and committee chairs to respond to the planning board's requests for input to the master plan.
Fine. I, I second, please.
I think that's, I don't know.
I don't know if we even need a motion for that, I mean, some of these things are assignments, more emotions.
Second. Yes, I know, but, all in favor?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I think that's a good start. Bring it back next month and we'll see if we can't provide the people who request things of a little better guidance.
Yeah, yes.
All right, going back to the agenda. Planning board accounts and the affordable housing accounts, I guess we'll work them together. Would you give us a report on that?
Uh, did you have any questions about correspondence? I did send all of the correspondence to you, but it was mainly just notifications of public hearings in local towns.
Yeah, I think it was other planning boards or zoning board of appeals.
Right.
People announcing their efforts. I didn't have any questions, anybody else? So why don't you update us on accounts, please, Christine?
Um, the accounts that are presented on page three of the agenda are pretty much, I haven't yet, I didn't dove into any of them yet. Uh, the one that really caught my attention over the course of the last several weeks was affordable housing. I sent out this email, which is in your packet, uh, November twenty-eighth. Um, and all of you should have gotten it in your, um.
Yep.
In your inbox for the Hupperton, Mass. And basically what I found was, with regards to affordable housing, there are currently two accounts. Uh, one of them is, uh, account number two hundred. It was primarily used for, um, the Moosehorn and, um, Madison Green, uh, contributions. And the money that was put into that was given to H and H Associates with Dick Eaton, um, as a means to create the Town of Hupperton Affordable Housing Production Plan. Uh, that plan is a necessity for the Department of Housing and Committee Development. And we're supposed to submit it to, um, the state once it's complete. Um, between two thousand fourteen and two thousand seventeen, it was worked on and, um, the money is sent to H and H, um, totaled sixteen thousand dollars. However, at the moment, that plan, um, is not filed with them. I did look back through the notes and it looks like it was never completely finalized, it was done by H and H, but it was not voted on by the Affordable Housing Committee Board and then submitted. I could find no evidence that it was ever submitted, and I did reach out on four separate occasions to the Department of Housing and Committee Development and they don't have voicemail. Um, I let the phone ring for about, uh, five minutes each time and then the system cut me off. Uh, they have no email address, so I'm thinking of possibly sending them a letter, um.
I think it's a, it's a board that meets infrequently.
Okay.
Um, my suggestion would be on how to communicate to them. I would give Dick Eaton a call.
Okay.
He is very familiar with that whole process and just say, Mr. Eaton, how do I, how do I negotiate my way to, to a contact?
Right. Uh, and then, of course, there's the fact that the, uh, Affordable Housing Committee hasn't met since April of two thousand and sixteen. And they would need to get back together to vote on that plan so that it can be moved forward and submitted to the state, because it expired in two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
I have a little research on that, too.
Okay.
Yeah, you wrote a, you wrote a note, right, uh?
I did and I, um, I actually sat down and read the whole plan. Cause it, Christina sent it to me through PDF. And I think that the the board, the housing board, task was to get this plan, a draft of this plan done. And if you read it, it, the, it has to be, before you send it to the state, approved by the planning board and by the select board. And there, if you look at the drafts, there are blanks in the drafts for the date it was approved by each board and they're still blank.
Right.
So I think it wasn't approved and you know, since it is a requirement that we have this plan in place, the penalty for not having it in place, aside from possibly losing the fifty thousand or other funds that could come our way, is that you don't have any defense if you have somebody that comes in with a comprehensive permit and wants to put a plan in town, because we're not in conformity and we don't have a plan.
You mean affordable B?
Yeah.
Affordable housing.
Right.
Yes.
So I think it's important, but, but the problem with the plan is that it was created to span the gap when the two thousand ten plan expired. It was supposed to be from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty. And we're already up to two thousand. It's every, um.
I believe it expired actually in two thousand sixteen, it was two thousand ten, there is one on file for two thousand ten to two thousand sixteen.
Oh, two thousand ten, that's right, that was sixteen.
We were supposed to submit ours in two thousand sixteen and now it, there isn't one, so it's expired since two thousand sixteen.
Did it expire in two thousand sixteen? Anyway.
That's what it says online.
Let me jump in a little bit, if I, if you don't mind. I'm always amazed that you people can look through all the old files and figure this out. I rely on my memory.
Well, it's still a puzzle. Yeah, you were on the committee, the housing committee.
Yes, yes, I was on the planning board and the affordable housing committee. I think we need to say for the benefit of the public what affordable housing is before we start talking about it. Affordable housing basically is a, a, uh, real estate entity, a house or a unit in a multifamily house or a condo that is affordable by a certain definition. And it's not like low-income housing or inexpensive housing in some way. It's regular housing built to the same standards as all the other condo units in the same, um, facility or the same development. It's regular housing built to the same standards as all the other condo units in the same, um, facility or the same development. Uh, but it is affordable by economic criteria, and I think a single-family house in Hubbardston that is affordable is somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars, plus or minus ten percent maybe, maybe one eighty to two twenty-five. I believe if we study what an affordable housing, affordable housing unit for Hubbardston, a single-family house, uh, would be that number. This is not inexpensive housing. This is just affordable, and, and, and I think for many people, it's just barely affordable. That house that is designated affordable actually carries the words affordable in the deed, and it is forever affordable. The Affordable Housing Committee had as its initial goal, it set out to, um, qualify the town for a certain aspect of all this. If the town could get, and I believe I'm right, my memory might not be serving me very well here, but if the town could prove that ten percent of the housing in town fell into the affordable, the financial criteria for affordable, then it would be exempt from the forty B projects coming into town. We could, we could say, no, we, we don't want that. Uh, and we could, we could be immune from that. We set out to figure out, what were we? Were we three, or seven, or ten? And at first, we were optimistic that we were in the, the high numbers. I don't know what the number was, but we were up closer to ten than to five. And, um, we set out to survey all the land in town and do the analysis of it, and that's much of what's in the report. Did you find those tables with percentages of housing affordable and all that?
Yes, yes, there are, but, yeah.
Yeah, and then, um, in, I'm gonna be a little bit out of sequence here, but it's easier to explain it this way. We found out that it wasn't really true that we were at five or six or seven percent, because the math, the underlying math and the statistics from the, on the various quality of the housing came from a couple different sources, and it got mixed up a little bit, and the math was wrong. We were really down below five percent, and it put getting to ten percent pretty much out of reach. We just don't build enough housing in town to ever get there. So somewhere along that path, we instituted a request to the zoning board of appeals, a Mr. Baum, at the time, I think Andy Baum. Do you know him? Do I have his name right?
Yeah.
I don't wanna say it wrong, but I think it's B A U M. And, uh, we went to the zoning board of appeals, and we said, we need to build regulations so that if a forty B does come into town, it can steamroller the town. If I understand it correctly, forty B applications are made, and the the timeframe for review and approval and whatnot is, is pretty short, and it puts the town at a disadvantage. It costs a lot of money to review these plans, and, um, the Town of Hubbardston then worked on regulations. We, we proposed some, and I believe it's the zoning, when, when an application for forty B comes to town, it comes to the zoning board of appeals. It doesn't come to the planning board. And, um, the zoning board of appeals put in place regulations that would, um, handle that application, similar to special permits or something. They had the applicant pay certain fees. We would do certain reviews with paid professionals, and we'd have time to get those done. And both the town and the forty B applicant would get a fair shake. It wouldn't be all the advantage on one side. And so that's what we presently have. We have those regulations, and we have a housing plan draft that pretty much stopped when we realized the math wasn't right, you know? But I have a, I, we all spent a lot of time on it, and I have a redlined version, which I would put up on the table. But I think what we have to do is form the Affordable Housing Committee. It was made, it's an ad hoc committee. It was made up of all the planning board members that wanted to be on it, plus, I believe, one member from the zoning board of appeals, and I think one member of the general public, but I'm not sure what constitutes it. But that would be my recommendation. We form a, we reform the Affordable Housing Committee. It meets separately from the planning board, and it picks up that thread, just like you said. Pick up the old report, bring it to life, make it more final, get it through a couple stages of approval process, and then submit it, and where it's deficient, we work on it. Someone has to tell us that, you know, this chapter doesn't, isn't very good. You gotta fix it up. And, uh, we, we'd work on it, make it better. But it should be outside of this board. It should be over in the Affordable Housing Committee.
The second part of my thing was the fifty thousand dollars. In two thousand sixteen, the Affordable, um, Housing Committee went to the town, um, filled out a CPA application, uh, for the Affordable Housing Committee, uh, for fifty thousand dollars, and the town voted them at fifty thousand dollars. It is now in, in account number two, uh, two four six. The funds are, are still there, um, but it is meant to be used for, um, going forward with the affordable housing plans.
Yeah, that, that money was allocated by the town for the Affordable Housing Committee. If the Affordable Housing Committee identified a candidate house that could, for, um, some amount of money, be fixed up and designated an affordable housing unit. And it would probably, we, we thought that it might be a derelict house, that you would have a tax taking. The bones were still good, but it needed a lot of work. We would do certain things like clearing the title and maybe drilling a well or something, and getting it to the condition where, um, we could get a third party involved, such as Habitat for Humanity or some such organization through volunteer labor, brings that house up to the necessary, um, standards and becomes habitable. It, it's a great idea, because it puts a derelict house back on the tax. It makes an affordable, uh, housing unit, and it brings a family to town that, uh, can live in town and afford to live in town. And there's probably three or four other benefits that I'm not recalling, but, um, that was the plan for the fifty thousand dollars. What we're lacking is a candidate, a, a, a housing candidate that is within reach. They're out farther on schedules. They're doing things, you know, the tax taking hasn't been accomplished, or the, the deed doesn't clear for another year or some such things, and I think we have two choices. Go to the CPC and say, we'd like to renew the money. Give us a, give us another chance. And that would be us putting in an application and going, well, first off, we ought to ask them, when does it expire? If it expires soon, we ought to ask them, how, what would be our renewal process? And see if we can get that fifty thousand dollars reestablished for the purposes I described. In parallel with that, we ought to continue to seek, the Affordable Housing Committee ought to continue to seek candidate homes, derelict homes that, uh, or, or tax-taking homes that could be, uh, made into affordable housing. And there's also a couple other things the town is doing. There's some kind of a state program that I'm not familiar with that also addresses derelict homes. And, um, the Affordable Housing Committee should be charged with coordinating some of this, so that we're not, you know, that we're all working together instead of this group is doing this and this group is doing that.
And the last thing I found with regards to the Affordable Housing Committee is that in, on September fifth, two thousand eighteen, this board voted that the Affordable Housing Committee would be comprised of the full planning board membership. So, um, all of you are, I guess, members of the Affordable Housing Committee. I, I got this from Joyce. I found this this afternoon.
What is that? Repeat that.
Yeah, you're right.
September fifth, two thousand eighteen, there was a vote by the planning board that the full, um, membership.
No, two thousand eighteen.
I'm sorry, two thousand eighteen, was that the Affordable Housing Ad-Hoc Committee would be comprised of the full planning board membership. So anyone on the planning board would be a member of the Affordable Housing Committee.
Bill, Bill made that motion, and he accepted the whole sheet. You might wanna pass that sheet over.
But is the other, are the other former members still on it?
I believe we can elect to have the other people on it. I don't think there's any reason why we should exclude anyone.
Well, it, it hasn't met since then? This is, this is a vote by the planning board?
But I mean, we, we supplant that former committee is the planning board, or we're, we bring these other people back and?
I don't know. As I said, I, when I went to Joyce to see who was sworn in as members of the, she said that because of that vote, that's what she has on file, is who is, who are members of the, so basically the planning board is the.
Is the housing committee.
Is the housing.
And it always was. I may not be accurate when I, when I said there was like a member of the public or, or something, but we would hold up our hands and ask for volunteers if someone wants to come. It's a lot of work. Yes?
I don't, I don't wanna take up too much time, but I had another thought. I did read this whole report that was submitted. And a lot of the focus, well, I have a few comments. One of which is, the focus was they also identified town-owned parcels, which I assume are without buildings, that could be suitable sites. And so if you go back, try to get this money renewed, if you could expand the mission a bit, seems to me if you had, you could use the fifty thousand to acquire a site for affordable housing, 'cause the town would have the title already. And it would be, could be used to clean up the title and have something to plan building on. So I would see if you could stretch it to do that.
I believe that was already included.
Okay.
What we did was we looked around for candidate sites that I mentioned. Some were privately owned. Some were tax-taken.
Yeah.
But there's very few of them. We haven't, as a town, we haven't initiated a lot of tax takings, I think. And, just one second. And so we searched for candidate, and we didn't rule out any category of candidates.
Okay.
If it was private-owned, we actually wrote letters to the owners and said, would you be interested in, you know, say, say you owe money on taxes. We'll wash your taxes clean if you sign the land over to the town for affordable housing, and it goes on the deed, affordable housing. Yes, Ed?
Does the town still own the five lots on Ragged Hill Road?
I believe it does. I, I can't swear to it, but I, last time I heard, they did.
Yeah, mine, that's my recollection, too, that they haven't been sold, but they were.
I believe they're listed as candidate, uh.
Yeah, the five house lots that have been perked that the town owns on Ragged Hill Road.
I, I did see that in the plan, and there's also a map.
It's in the document.
There's a, in the document also has a map where all the town-owned parcels are flagged. But when I read this report and I sat down, and it is kinda dense, because, you know, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what I found, what I think it said, and everybody should read it, because we should bring this back, and that's gonna be my motion, is that we all read it and come back. But I think what they said is there's a number of ways that you can get to this ten percent affordable housing. There's a number of formulas. It's not, uh, and one of them, um, was, so the goal is to get ten percent, you're, it's, they're called S H I, subsidized housing inventory, is their, their key. Um, and the, and the, and the goal is to have ten percent of your housing units in town be those S H I units, which sounds impossible. But when you went through this analysis, which was this H and H analysis, um, this is what they said. They said, you can look at, they said, first of all, only four percent of the land, nine hundred and fifty acres in Hubbardston, is currently available for development, because so much of the land is owned by the state and the community. So you've got this nine hun, or it's wet land or whatever. So you've got nine hundred and fifty acres available for development, and their regulations, one of the formulas you can use is one and a half percent of your land, uh, used, is be, can be used for S H I units. And that includes, so there's an area calculation rather than a unit calculation, and that includes landscaping and parking areas, okay? So then they said presently, and this was two thousand fifteen, Hubbardston has eight point five acres of S H I use. So out of the nine hundred and fifty acres available, they've got eight point five acres. I don't know whether anything's been added since then.
Think of that as one percent.
Right, so they say the additional land area that would need to be developed to meet that one and a half percent rule is in dispute. Um, DHC says, well, you know, 'cause they calculate all the land you take out, it's not, that's been concerned, anyway, it's not developable. The water, the stuff owned by the state and so on, but one of the categories that's in dispute is land, um, for conservation, designated conservation. So the state is maintaining, uh, though there's a dispute over that land. So the state says, well, you have, you have to develop twenty-two point eight-four more acres to meet your S S I percentage, one and a half percent. But the town said, no, we don't. We only have to develop five point six more acres. So there's these two columns, confirmed acreage, unconfirmed acreage, right? And the big, and when you read more in that, a lot of the, a lot of the fight was over. There was supposed to be, the housing committee claimed, one thousand one hundred and forty-five acres that should be excluded, because it will soon be purchased by the Hubbardston Forestry Legacy Trust. Did that happen?
I don't believe it did.
Okay, so therein lies a huge discrepancy, but we should find out, because if it's, if it's really only five point six more acres that we would have to develop to be in conformity, that's not an impossible goal.
No, but I think, um, I, I will, I will not say anything, but I do remember my, I won't say anything about the facts. But I do remember the impression I got was that it's a little out of reach. We weren't gonna get to it easy. Now, I'm perfectly willing to open up this report again, reread it with fresh eyeballs, figure it out, work on it. I'm with you. But that path was considered out of reach at the time, and that's why we implemented, um, the CBA rules, so that even though we're not exempt, we would at least have some control over how a forty B comes in.
No, I, I think that's good. I mean, I just, I mean, the, the other thing is, do you, you know, the state has this goal, and you try to meet the goal, because we need the senior housing, the affordable housing in this town. But I'm just saying, I don't think it's necessarily impossible. I thought this was really interesting to read.
I think we all need it, need to read it as well as you did, and we also need to form a separate committee, so that it doesn't consume the planning board.
Or make it a subcommittee of the.
It's an ad hoc committee of the planning board, and it, and we voted, as Christine is correct, on September fifth, we voted to form that committee. I guess what I need is somebody to run it. I, I got, you know, being a chairman of this board and working in the library trustees and whatnot, I'm pretty much full. I, I'd need a, uh, someone to pick up the lance on affordable housing and move it forward.
One more question, if, I mean, I would like to be on the committee, not saying I wanna.
Ed.
To chair.
One second.
I, I was just gonna ask, can we use any of that fifty thousand to get H and H back to, to help us revise this plan and?
Well, we need to know. Do we still have it? We, we appear to have it.
It is still there in the account. I checked with Lori Barkus as early as this week.
Does it expire? What are the conditions that you can use it for? And, you know, that's the process you have to go through to.
I know, but it's, there's a tremendous amount of work that's going into this plan.
Unbelievable.
It is, it would be such a shame not to build on it, and I think, I think that it's beyond the little layman's, you know, your committee of laymen's.
Yes. Dick Eaton did a good job.
So if we could see if we could free up some of that money to finalize a report that stalled.
I've read the application. The application is kept very general, and basically, uh, it, from what I can read, states that the mon, funds must be used to try and bring the town up to the goal of ten percent. Um, so I could read in, I'll read into it further and find out.
Could you do me a favor?
Mm-hmm.
Contact the CPC chair on what the rules are on the life of a granted sum of money.
Mm-hmm.
It was granted on a date. Is there a life? Does it expire? And if it expires, what's the process to re-up it? Um, that would be very helpful. Do you mind doing that?
Sure.
Okay, now Ed, what?
Yeah, I'd, I'd really maybe give a little bit of historical perspective. Um, in two thousand ten, um, the, um, zoning board of appeals, uh, got a grant for about, I think it was fourteen thousand dollars, but we'll hold these at that, in order to put together a plan for the town that would make sense, so that if we got forty B applications, they would be coming through the, uh, the zoning board of appeals, and so we decided at that time, we better take some positive action and make sure that the town had a process that made sense for affordable housing. So that's the two thousand ten plan that was done by a grant. So that's the two thousand ten plan that was done by a grant. And that, I guess, took us up to two thousand sixteen. I didn't know that it expired, but now I do. So in two thousand sixteen, um, the planning board, um, got monies from two developers. Um, Madison Green and, um, and also Moosehorn Estates.
Moosehorn.
Each of those developers was supposed to, um, develop two units of, each of them, two units of affordable housing. And rather than doing the affordable housing, they came back and asked the planning board for a waiver for not providing two affordable units. And I don't know this for a fact, but I, I understood that for ten thousand dollars each lot. That, um, that would be designated, would come back to the planning board, and the planning board would designate that only for affordable housing expenses. So four lots at ten thousand would be forty thousand, but I don't, I, I think we should check where, where that money came in and did we get the forty thousand? Because if so, we spent sixteen on developing the second affordable housing plan. Which, which did tons of research and that regarding trying to get to the ten percent limit.
Yeah.
And, um, and, and I remember, I mean, they did, they, they scratched here and there and all over the place to come up with ten percent. And that's probably the report they're looking at.
That's what I was reading then.
But my thought would be for the, uh, the, the possibility is if, um, what was the name of that consultant?
Mr. Hayden.
Why wouldn't we take, why wouldn't he take his report, which was supposed to bring the affordable housing plan up to date?
H and H.
Why wouldn't that be in place and be able to review that? I mean, we spent sixteen thousand dollars on it, so it, it should be. Um, it, it should be a plan that we should be able to, uh, file and bring us up to date so that we're not rears back to two thousand sixteen.
Ed, that's what we just said, wasn't it?
Well, one, one of the prob- well, that's what I came here tonight thinking, we could just, we could just approve this plan.
But you said that, you said, let's take the old report.
But as it exists, but the problem with the plan.
Not as it exists.
That's the problem.
As we should revise it. I have a redlined copy, as I mentioned earlier. We'll take that up, put it on the table in front of the affordable housing committee. I wanna get it out of the planning board, cause it's gonna consume it like we're doing tonight. We're not having, we shouldn't have an affordable housing committee now. We should be moving on to our agenda. But I think you're, you're not accurate on your money, but it's, you're accurate in the purpose. We have that. Yes, we have that.
Okay, I'd like an accounting, could we get an accounting? At the next meeting, could we get an accounting for what monies did come in for the developers?
We have, we're in the process of already doing that. That's what Christine is charged with from two meetings ago. She is working on that. We will have an accounting. Um.
I had the accounts for the last five years. I'm not sure, I haven't been able to identify the exact sums that came in from those two separate accounts. Um, so I have to, you know, pinpoint those exact transactions, but I do know that there were two sums of money that came in in the amount of five thousand apiece.
Yeah.
I don't know if that was those two I'm looking into.
And, and I, I think, um, Madison Green had four units and Moosehorn had two. And we took, the, the planning board was willing to take that money because they, as you correctly said, allocated it only for affordable housing purposes. And I think we need to kinda wrap this. What we've said already was, the report is, I don't know, seventy-five percent complete, eighty percent complete. It shouldn't be abandoned. It should be pushed to a hundred. And that will take effort on the part of the affordable housing committee team. And I think we ought to understand it and revise it as best we can before we bring in any more consultants. We ought to really understand it ourselves. And if we think it's good enough in the revised condition, that might not be till January or something, or February. If we think it's good enough, then we move it along to our own approval and to the select board approval and to the submission to the state. If it's not good enough, the state may very well tell us, or we may be able to talk to them about it before we actually submit it and find any deficiencies. And if at that time, we can't do it ourselves, we bring in a consultant then, cause I'm a little stingy on that. You know, I, I don't want to have the consultant know so much about it that we're, we're kind of, uh, unknowledgeable. And you become confused and dependent. I wanna be, I want us to understand it.
Having just. Having just read this, I think that, I mean, there's certain things, like there is goals, what we're gonna accomplish, and we're supposed to go build five more units by two thousand ten.
Well, that's water over the.
So I mean, there are things that need to be, but I think you could do fairly minor revisions.
Yeah, that's what we said ten minutes ago.
But we need to get our committee together to do that, who's gonna do that?
That's correct. I'm looking for someone to run it. Uh, as I said, I'm not interested in running it. I think we need to have a, a planning board member, uh, step forward and be the chairman. And if, uh, Bill or Craig would like to do it, or you, Kendall, I don't know who, I, I'm volunteering not to do it.
I'll, I'll volunteer to do it. I think it needs to be done.
You take on an awful lot. Um.
I don't wanna do the red, I mean, I think you have to be involved in it because you're the person.
I can give you the red line.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, in fact, I need to, why don't we distribute the red line, have everybody read it and call an affordable housing committee meeting?
Which will be a meeting of this meeting?
No, it's not the planning board. It's the affordable housing committee. And it's some night, other night, some other time, some other place. Well, it doesn't have to be some other place, but it's separate and distinct. Cause blurring the two together creates evenings like tonight where it takes an hour out of our planning board agenda. We can't do this. It has to be separate. Uh, and I'd like to end the discussion. It's, this is not an affordable housing meeting. Ed?
One, one quick question is, uh, could you check to see if the planning board has the voting authority to take over the affordable housing committee? I know you did vote it, but does the planning board have the authority to vote and take over the affordable housing committee?
What do you mean by take over?
That was what you vote was, you, you voted as a planning board to all be members of the affordable housing committee. That's what you said.
Yes, that's the way it was in the past. Membership has changed, and so we're reconstituting the board with the new members.
That's not my question. My question is, does the planning board have the authority to by vote take over the affordable housing committee?
It's a, it's an ad hoc subcommittee of the planning board. There's, it's not a separate committee in the sense that it's an open space committee or a CPC committee. So I'm gonna say yes, and if you don't agree with me, produce something that would contradict that, but that's my understanding.
But.
So we'd like to move on.
You say it's an ad hoc committee of this committee.
It's a.
It's only, some, it's, we'll have other members that are not on this committee.
It, I believe, I believe it can. I don't believe it ever has, I'm not sure.
Are not part of the board.
And if someone wants to volunteer for it, let's bring them in. But, um, pardon me? What?
I just would like to leave it with where we're gonna go. If we could have, um, motion that everybody reads that report, at least the executive summary of the report by next time?
I don't know if you can make a motion to force somebody to read something.
So you read something, but where does it, where does it go from here, I guess?
I think if you volunteer to pull the committee together.
Okay.
Meaning the ad hoc.
Okay.
Affordable housing committee.
Yeah.
Then, um, I would like to see that it is appropriately formed.
Okay.
You know, that we're, 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 uh, legally and appropriately constituted and formed and we have a mission.
Okay.
And then we voted to have membership, and it was the, everybody on the planning board at the time. If that's appropriate, we can move forward. If it's not appropriate, we'll step back. If other citizens can or should be on it, we'd constitute it to include them. And then the first mission would be to read the old plan.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
Alice, I spoke to Lori about the fact that the affordable housing committee has no minutes online. I have minutes here in paper format from previous meetings. And I had talked to Lori about the possibility of, um, the affordable housing committee having their own site, cause the planning, they're not the planning board there. And putting the agendas with the planning board agendas and the meeting with the, planning board meeting would just get messy. Um, and she said that would be fine if the affordable housing committee met, we can start trying to rebuild the concept of them as their own entity. That way we don't have to have the, anything get all mixed up and muddled online.
Yeah, there's only, there's only so much energy.
Okay. Okay.
And when, when major special permit things come in, and I believe some of them did around the time that this petered out. You only have so much energy, and, and we're all volunteers, we just can't bring it up to the goal line, you know? But it's a worthy report.
I have that information you were asking for. In November of two thousand ten, the ad hoc affordable housing subcommittee was a. Ad hoc committee of the zoning board of appeals in two thousand ten. I was on it, Christie Casey, Karen Galbraith, Joyce Green, the clerk, Marsha Hopper. Judy O'Donnell was chair, Dennis O'Donnell was on it, and Donna Warfield. And Karen Soonavird, which was a housing and planning consultant that we had at the time. So somewhere between November two thousand ten and when you made that vote, uh, it was a.
What vote?
The vote we, we decided that all members of the planning board would be the ad hoc.
Well, that was September two thousand eighteen. Prior to that, at least three or four years prior to that, we reconstituted the same committee. And I don't recognize any of those names as being on it at the time. That's how this report was accomplished. It wasn't accomplished since September two thousand eighteen, it was accomplished back in two thousand fifteen and sixteen with a committee. So we have to go back to those dates.
The committee's members are listed in the report.
Yes.
So if I can find out, if I can contact them, that's a starting point. Are they interested in serving, are they not?
That'd be excellent.
I'll come back. I'll do that for you by next time.
They'd have continuity, they'd have continuity that, uh, some of us would not have.
Yep. I will do that. Contact them.
Okay.
If you wanna set up a meeting, let me know. I can post it online.
Okay.
Okay, it's eight o'clock. We gotta, gotta keep going. This is why you do not mix a planning board meeting and then a, and a affordable housing committee meeting.
Yes, I'm sure.
Uh, do you have my meeting minutes or?
Do I have them? I don't think so.
I'm looking for my agenda. Oh, here it is. I'm sorry. I accused you of stealing mine. All right, here, where are we? Um. Christina, just as a wrap, you are continuing, continuing of a, uh, maybe a five-year review of money in and money out as it relates to the affordable housing.
I am.
Okay.
That's the first account set that I'm working on. After that, I'll be working on the other, um, planning board accounts.
Okay. So now we're up to Seaboard Solar, and I believe we have a guest.
We do.
He's been sitting there for an hour and a half, you know? That last discussion wasn't, wasn't really part of the agenda.
I have a couple letters and see.
Would you introduce yourself, please?
Yep. So I'm Peter Engel from Burton Engineering. Here on behalf of True Green Capital, who has purchased a solar array at ninety-one Williams Hill from Seaboard. Um, they're looking for a certificate of completion. Um, everything on site appears to be, um, up to the, uh, latest approved site plan. Uh, the drainage basin is built as designed, the site is stabilized, um, wetlands were replicated after they were cleared. So everything from that aspect looks good, um, and I know from talking with Noah from True Green Capital and from the letter in the agenda. There was some questions on landscaping, which I personally can't really comment on. But from a site, um, perspective, everything was pretty much built to the plans.
We can't really, you, you're asking for some kind of a, 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 a letter from the planning board that says everything's done.
If that is the case.
And, um, with a complaint from a citizen and with, um, questions that have arisen. We feel that the, the right process to take would be to have our own engineer, um, look it over, do a, um. Compliance assessment might be the term. There are, there's a permit, valid permit.
Yeah.
A set of conditions, and he would analyze the existing system with respect to those conditions. And, um, we would also want, I mean, that's, that's like trees and rocks, you know? But there's also a paper side of this. You opened your discussion tonight with the fact that, um, it's a different owner.
Right.
It might be a different owner than we have on record. And so I would like you to present your, uh, ownership documents, deeds or whatever it is. And, you know, prove that the ownership has changed, and then if the ownership does change, um, we have some things that the new owner has to start to comply with. For instance, the, um, surety money for decommissioning and taxes and other things. We'd like to make sure all those kind of soft requirements. It's not roads and rocks and trees, but it's, it's paper requirements. We'd like to make sure the paper side of this is also all in order, which, which should be part of the, everything's in order statement.
Yeah.
So that's where we'd like to go. I have a, I called our engineer and I let him know that something like this was coming. And he sent me a note, and I'm looking for it. Right here. He sent me a note just, uh, yesterday. As a result of our conversation earlier today, you've asked what is, what a likely professional services fee would be to conduct a compliance assessment. Of the solar facility at ninety-one Williamsville Road, now or formerly of Seaboard Solar. And he said, we'll review the existing permits, we'll look at the as-built, um, there's closeout documents. Go down and do the site review and come back and, and, and have a report that says, this is the requirement and this is the condition. Condition assessment or compliance assessment. And he says that'll cost about two thousand dollars. And that of course assumes that you're all in compliance. If you're not in compliance and we have to start doing things, then he has to go back and check them too. So it might roll a little bit, but I think, I think it's really reasonable that, uh, that's a reasonable estimate. And, um.
Yeah, and I think True Green was under the impression that that was gonna be the case, so.
Yeah, that, it's kinda normal. We've done it with numerous, on numerous occasions. If someone wants to make, make a change, we do the same thing, you know? If, if you would, um, agree to that, um, I think it's, it's a small amount of money for a big reward. I think it, it settles the issue.
Right.
And it settles, settles it in a comprehensive manner. We look at the whole thing, paperwork, trees, rocks, fences. And, and, um, we need your help. We need some, uh, um, especially on the paperwork side.
Yeah.
We need some of this change of ownership information.
Right. Yeah, I'll have to contact my client and get all that stuff for you, but.
And, uh, and we need a check. And I don't know if you're prepared to do that tonight, but when you get it to us.
Oh, I won't be doing that.
When you get it to us, um, send it to Christina.
Yeah.
And she'll put out a ping to all of us. It doesn't require deliberation.
Yeah.
But, um, she'll put a ping to us and we'll get, um, our, our agent in action. His name is William Murray, and he's with a firm called Places and Associates in Littleton, Massachusetts. And we use him consistently. He does a good job. So I don't think you're, you're, this is not just a, take some money and put you through some hurdles. He really does a very good job. And, uh, also in our meeting agenda, we included the complaint of the.
Right.
Um, uh, neighbor, and we really need that addressed, not necessarily tonight, but in fact, he's not here, but, um, he doesn't have to be here, he wrote his letters.
Right.
And, uh, we'd like that addressed in the, in maybe your report or Bill's report or, or some combination of that. We really need to address that head on.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, I'll have to. Yeah, uh, I'll have to talk to my client and see what they wanna do about it.
Who is the owner?
True Green Capital.
And that's not Seaboard?
No. So, they purchased it from Seaboard.
Okay.
And I believe they submitted something, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, don't get me wrong, I, it might just not have come across our desk.
Right.
You know, it could be in the treasurer's office or something.
Just a comment, in two thousand eighteen, our bylaw was amended. And the last chapter, or the last paragraph tha- of that says, "The owner of the solar installation shall provide a report to the planning board in January each calendar year with the following information: Total amount of electricity generated, major maintenance performed, planned or actual major system modifications, change of ownership, changes to bond amounts." So, by neck, the time you come back
Yep.
at the next meeting, this report is due. And it'll cover a lot of that.
Yeah.
I don't believe that's a, does that contain a revision, uh, number?
It says, uh-
I believe that statement was in the old law.
Says added six, five, eighteen.
The whole paragraph?
Maybe it's-
Not the whole paragraph.
The bottom par- last paragraph. The footnote.
All right, I, I think we had a reporting requirement in there before, I'll just have to check it.
Maybe they-
I don't have my old law with me.
But if you're just-
But, yeah, I'll pass that.
It doesn't matter if it was revised a long time ago or not, we can, we can just ask you to do that. And check if you agree with it, it'll be really nice and easy.
Understandable thing, yeah.
That's true of all Solar's folks.
Right.
We really need to enforce that. How can we help you? What, what do you need? If, if this little plan goes forward, what do you need? What?
Do they, for like a letter?
Well, I mean, you're gonna give us a check, we're gonna go out and do a thing, we're gonna do a report.
To get this passed.
Is there anything else you need from us?
I don't believe so. Um, I'll pass all this information on to True Green Capital and let them run with it. Because they basically hired us because we did the original design, we were Seaboard's consultants.
And your firm is?
Burton Engineering.
Oh, yeah, your names are on the, uh, on the original plans.
Right. And I believe, once that was approved, Seaboard basically took it. We really, we were involved in some portions when they kinda screwed up, um, coming back in, but-
That's a long story, we don't need to drag all that up.
Right, yeah, so.
I'd like to pick it up and go forward.
Yeah. So, because we hadn't as-built done, the new owner came to us to try to get this thing closed out and-
Yeah, you have an as-built from fifteen, two thousand fifteen.
Yep.
Your original plans were thirteen and fourteen.
Right. It was permitted in, you know, December of thirteen.
Yeah. Read your permit, of course.
Yep.
That's this set of conditions. And, um, our latest bylaw, I don't, I don't think it's retroactively applicable.
Right.
But it will be our guide as to what we, what our expectations are, you know?
Sure.
Uh, and I think the reporting requirement was in there, uh, from the old days, I'll have to check.
Yeah, either way, I'll, I'll pass that on and have them, you know, I'm sure that's an easy thing for them to-
It's on the web.
Yeah. Yep. So.
Any questions from anybody on the board, uh, as to what we're doing here? This is, I, I spewed it forth because it's kinda standard procedure, you know, you hire your engineer and you go out and do your assessment.
Yeah, no, I think that's exactly right.
All right. Yes, sir.
I do have a quick question. How does the scenic road, uh, the matter of scenic roads, uh, apply for any, uh, solar farms? Maybe you can tell us.
Well, I don't, I don't believe it's, it, it's, uh-
Are they excluded, are they included as property?
I don't, I don't believe they're excluded.
Okay.
Uh, as it would be for a house, someone's gonna cut a driveway in or something like that.
I'm just bringing this up because Williamsville Road is considered part of this, a list of scenic roads, and I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
Nope.
Okay.
What's your point, though?
That any kind of requirements that are applicable from a scenic road perspective, uh, should also be considered as any kind of development potentially takes place. I think Alice brought this up last time with regards to the removal of trees, which is part of the complaint.
Well, they were removed. Am I doing my math right, they were removed four years ago. They're not gonna be removed now.
I'm seeing pictures here which indicate that this was as of twelve, three, two thousand eighteen, that's why I'm asking the question.
I think you're mistaken. This has been built since two thousand thirteen.
That's fine, I, I'm just, I'm just looking at the, the information that was prepared and presented here as part of the agenda. And maybe I'm misreading it because the date on this here-
All, all pictures are before the system was built.
Okay.
The building permit was pulled in January fourteen, and that's when-
And since then, no official work has taken place.
Right, but the clearing was done when they pulled that permit, so.
The date on those pictures is when the email was forwarded, not the date of the picture.
Well, there's a date on that, and then there's a date on the bottom which says twelve, three, four, okay.
Where is that?
Again, it's, it's confusing.
There was also, was also scenic road at that time.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
But, uh, the page, the photographs on page six of seven of the agenda are taken before any work was done. I believe there was a cart road, and he walked in a hundred feet, took a picture looking south, and turned around, took a picture north, back towards the road. The other two pictures are when the initial work started at the road, and they were building a, um, uh, laydown area. I think it's shown on the, on the drawings, or in, on one of the drawings. And this is, uh, these photographs are from the very inception of construction. Sorry for any misunderstanding. I will email you this. And if you could email this on to the rest of the board, not for comment, since I've read it tonight, and then get this to both, um, Noah and, do we have your card? Or if you could leave your contact information. Did you sign in?
I did.
I'll, I'll electronically give you that, but I'm giving it to you tonight as a reminder.
I've got a follow-up question.
Yes.
Um, the scenic roads bylaw here is, it says adopted June two thousand eighteen, is that right, or did, was that amended on that date? Is this a new bylaw, scenic roads?
I'd have to check our article from the town meeting.
Did it exist at the time? That this was developed in two thousand fourteen, or?
It existed, and what I think we did in two thousand eighteen, what is, what is the word, adopted?
It says adopted June two thousand eighteen, effective September eighteenth, I'm sorry, adopted June two thousand eighteen, effective September eighteen, two thousand eighteen. So, if it has a history, it's not included in the-
That's correct. I believe in June two thousand eighteen, at the town meeting, we had a special town meeting. And we, um, adopted, if that's the right word, we adopted the scenic law, uh, scenic, scenic road law, because there was something, um, I'll say, not perfect, about the way it existed in our bylaws prior to that. And that's as specific as I can get. I would have to talk to Vince Ritchie or Joyce about what we were doing there.
Okay, but it does a, a form of this, and Williamsville vote being included on it, pre, goes back to when they were developing
Yes.
the property.
Yes. It, something existed many, many, for many, many years, um, prior to the, this adoption. This adoption was a procedural requirement of some type.
Okay.
I just can't remember exactly.
I'm just thinking, is our, is one of the things our consultant's gonna go look at, is conformity, to see if trees were taken down that need to be replaced, or seems-
I can't, no, I, I don't think that's the case. I think what we're authorized to do is look, um, at this project through the lens of the special permit conditions.
To see if it was built according to plans.
Yeah, we're looking at compliance
Okay.
assessment.
Okay.
And I'm choosing those words kinda carefully, 'cause they're the ones Bill used.
Okay.
Compliance assessment. I believe we had some tree issues, and they got settled somehow, and I don't remember exactly how.
That, that's not the gist of the complaint by the abutter?
I believe the gist of the complaint is as he wrote, I can't express it any other way, I think he feels that, um, things aren't as they should be.
Right.
And I, I, I'm not going to express his complaint beyond that.
Okay.
I mean, that's why you file a complaint, it's not as it should be, in your eyes.
And you're aware of it, because they were copying it.
As far as, I, I wasn't involved with this project back then, but, um, as far as I know, the trees along the road were to remain, the existing vegetation, they were cleared. They returned to the planning board and came up with this berm with plantings on top of it to remediate that clearing. And the complaint is that, that remediation is not adequate.
I think you've expressed it pretty well.
Yeah.
So, our consultant can go out there, and he can say that berm and those trees are part of the as-built plan, and he could tell us whether they built it as in the plan, or whether it's efficient.
Well, there's, there's a question of whether it's, uh, built exactly to the plan, and then there's the question of, does it satisfy the intent of the plan?
Right.
And, and, um, I think, after we hear Mr. Murray's report, we'll take his recommendations.
But you will have him look at it?
Oh, very definitely.
Okay.
Cover to cover.
Okay.
And I think, uh, Mr. Engel expressed that correctly as far as he went. There were many other, you know, it was concom violations, wetlands violations. There was a family of, of, um, what I'll call inappropriate activity.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, and you're being open and honest, and I appreciate it.
That's not necessarily on my firm, that's on the previous owner, but-
But the new owner has all the obligations of the old owner. Your change in ownership does not change anything about his obligations. Very good. I'm sorry we took you so long, it took so long to get to you.
It's all right. It's all right.
Pleasure meeting you. Peter Engel.
Yep.
With Burton Engineering.
So, I will pass an online information and-
Oh, card, sure.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice meeting you. Have a good night. Thank you, you too.
Hey. I think that's headed in the right direction, we'll see how it goes. We expect a check from him?
Or from True Green, yes.
Uh, yeah, somebody to fund, um, uh, Bill Murray's effort. I think maybe we ought to make a motion, that upon receipt of the check, um, and communication of the, uh, of a green light to Bill Murray, we move that he will conduct the compliance assessment.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
I second. I'll appear.
Okay. Now, we're trying to be specific about motions.
I'm gonna write them verbatim, yes.
Okay, well, you'll get it on the tape.
Yes.
Okay. If it doesn't make sense, fix it, well, I guess you gotta go with what I said.
I can't, yeah, yeah. It, it makes sense, it's fine.
I tried. Now, this gentleman gave us a report of his own, of, uh, November fifth. And, you know, copious photographs, and, uh, a report of some value. I think the right thing for the planning board to do is what we just did. Put this aside as the owner's position, and you await Bill Murray's report. So, I give this to you.
Okay. Should this be provided to Bill Murray, so that he has something to, um, either counteract, so that he can look at this and go, even though their report says this, I don't believe this.
This is, this isn't an argument among engineering people.
Okay.
This is a, a simple comparison of the requirements of the special permit and reality. And we're very likely to take Bill's word for everything until someone comes along and proves an aspect of it inappropriate.
Okay.
How's that?
Yeah, as long as Bill looks at that berm and the trees.
Oh, you can't get by it, that's how you, you can't get by it if you drive by it.
Okay.
And I suggest every, uh, board member do drive by it.
Yeah, I will.
Uh, take a look at it, and you might even stop your car and park it there, and go over and stand on, on the neighbor's property line, and look back at it, look south, and see what you see, so that you will see what he sees. Now, website.
Okay.
Christina.
Anyone who's been to the website recently has noticed some minor changes, um, they, I did put in the purpose, I did update, uh, contact information on the website. However, um, I was ignorant of how to update s- some of the drop-down menus, and so, uh, until the end of last week, when I got some time with Lori, who was on vacation, uh, I was unable to get into the drop-down menus that are on the left-hand side of the website. I will be going ahead and moving with those, but I wanted a little bit of board input with regards to what I would be including. There'd been some suggestions about a solar FAQ. Um, I was, as I said, I'd mentioned with Lori, uh, the concept of linking to affordable housing, and whether or not affordable housing would have their own website. Um, I wanted to obviously update the for, you know, have the forms and everything a little bit more, uh, user-friendly, so people would know where to find them. I've been working with Joyce to make sure that, uh, to find out when the last time some of the forms were updated, uh, to decide whether or not they needed to be, uh, revisited. Um, so, basically, it's still a work in progress, but, um, I, I do have plans to get in there and, uh, sort of clean up the left side of, and get rid of any duplication, and, uh, make the tabs a little bit more easy with regards to, um, so that people find it a little more user-friendly. If they need a special permit, it would be great if there was just a button over that says special permits, they click it, and they have the, the instructions and everything in there. As well as the, of course, the fee schedule's going to go up as soon as I, I get in there as well, Alice.
Yeah, there's, there's, I think there's probably frequently used aspects of the site, and then some more esoteric ones, you know?
Right.
So, we wanna figure out a way to focus on this frequently used ones, the A N R and the, and, uh, I, I noticed that when I go to it, I, I see something that says, a little note up there, you know? Now, before you cut down any trees, make sure you look at the tree ward, or talk to the tree ward.
Right.
And that's only one of, I mean, it's good that we have that note up. Maybe we should have a link to where you click, and it goes over to the tree ward and page, you know, so it gets his phone number and whatnot.
Right.
But, um, before you go into a lot, there's a whole bunch of things, like scenic roads.
Right.
Uh, uh, border health, concom, and, you know, there's, and I don't really know where to start on that. What, what do you do? I think we could add scenic roads and be within our purview.
Right.
Um-
Again, a link to affordable housing, the forms, the special permits, uh, an FAQ is always a good place to start, because people, when they come there, they're wondering, well, where do I go to find X? Or, you know, what are the regulations regarding this in this town? You know, the zoning bylaws, make sure it's linking to that, so that people aren't trying to dig too far into our website, so.
Yeah. And there's a, there's a, uh, there's a rule that I used to follow, you don't put the same document in two places.
No, because then you have to update it twice.
Always link. Yeah, yeah, and, and you don't, and there's differences, and it gets into a big problem. So, we never wanna put the same thing in two locations.
So, yeah, that's, it's a work in progress, but I, I, I hope to be able to say, okay, now that it's like this, what do people want next? By our next meeting, so that, yes?
He's got answers, he's gonna ask me. Go ahead, finish.
Oh, okay, no, that was it.
What we, what I think it's required is that we all go in and try using it a few times.
Mm-hmm.
Just poking around, may, pretend you're a customer, and, you know, how do I? In fact, I think there's a button, how do I, question mark? And you should click that and enter your thing and get some kind of an answer, but it's gonna be a lot of work, we'll, we'll get there.
I just have a suggestion, there is an application, 'cause I've seen the document, for the, for this alteration of a scenic road. You file an application with the planning board, so it's on us. Otherwise, the tree ward and goes out to whoever, if it comes to us, that application. So, I think the form, that form should be, rather than it says, check this bylaw, it should be more, it says, if you are, if you are, you know, if you live on a scenic road, C-list,
Right.
you must apply.
Right, with the, with the, um-
You must follow this form and apply to the planning board for all the region of it. I mean, it should be more, right, and personally, I think it ought to have a fee associated with it. So, they plan the form, file a form with their fee, so somebody can go out there- So they plan the form, file a form with their fee, so somebody can go out there and inspect it.
Did we have a scenic road fee? I guess we didn't.
No.
No, we don't.
Well, then why didn't we put it on our list?
Because, you know, it's this, where do you cut it off? I was trying to get.
Yeah, and who gets the fee?
I did put in my notes and who gets the fee?
The tree warden might or the, the.
But I, but how can you have, um, you know, it does have a penalty for violating it.
Yes.
But the form does not pop up. And that this warning that check this bylaw isn't, you know, the same as saying you must file if you live on a.
Right, which is why I think Craig was working on his flagging system where everybody is trying to communicate between boards. So if you hear about somebody starting a new house, uh-oh, we all start looking at scenic roads to make sure that they're filing the appropriate application for that too, so.
I think, um, uh, we always wanna, you know, ideally we'd have some kind of a process flow sheet. You go here, you get accepted, you go there and you go there. It, it's pretty complex. Let's just nibble at that and, and make sure we get them in the right, right place. And on specific to scenic roads, I think September fifth, Vince Ritchie was here with a scenic road application. And him, him being a, he being a prior planning board member, tried to present that as a template. This is how it should be done. And I don't know if you remember that because you weren't here very long. But he came in and presented it in a very comprehensive way and had all the forms filled out and everything and, you know? If we look back at that, we can see it as a template, or at least the best template we have.
Right, well, we have an application. The only problem is at the moment, the application has at least one issue in it. And I was talking to Craig about possibly updating it. The, uh, current measurement requirement is any trees over five feet in diameter. Not five inches. So that makes for some very, very big trees. And I don't think we have many of those around here. So I, we need to change that from feet to inches.
I think if you bring that to the town clerk, she'll help you on how we change it.
Oh, yeah, well, we just have to retype the form. It's.
Oh, it's just on the form, it's not in the law?
No, it's just on the law.
Oh, well, then just retype the form.
Yeah.
Bring it in next time, we'll prove it and.
Okay.
And, uh, start using, I'm gonna excuse myself for one second.
I'm gonna get a drink of water or two. They have cups over there? You want a drink? I'll bring you one. Oh, you're all set.
I'm gonna buy us a vodka. Ed, do you still have that big monster station wagon that you used to have?
No, that was a, I think it was a sixty-three Oldsville station wagon.
Could always tell when you were going up and down the street.
Yep. It was good when you had three kids and they had a lot of stuff going to the beach.
Moving into college.
They just don't call them station wagons anymore.
Yeah.
S U Bs or whatever, yeah.
And a brilliant idea, why don't we make a simple motion that, uh, we allow Christine to update the form from inches, from feet to inches and we're done with it.
Okay.
Just take a motion to correct the form.
Got it.
So it complies with the bylaw.
All in favor? Can you capture that motion?
Uh, one moment, there was no second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It wasn't? Okay.
He was getting ready. He was, he was ready to say, he was gonna second that.
Okay.
It's good we got a referee here. Alright. Please, uh, go into the website, exercise it and see if we can figure out ways to make it better.
Yep.
Okay. Then I'll be going in and making it a little better before the next meeting. I'll be changing those sidebars.
It's a continuous process.
Right.
And, uh, thank you for doing it. It's a little tedious, but we'll get there. Alright, real quick, a report. There's a thing called the Assessment for the Installation of Photovoltaic Solar Facility dated May fifteenth, two thousand fifteen. It was commissioned by the planning board and paid for, I think, out of our expenses. And it was performed by Bill Murray at Places and Associates. And the mission, the objective of the report was to go around town, look at the, at the assessor maps or any other Google Earth type stuff and figure out if, uh, there are candidate sites for solar farms on town property and, um.
He's already in the best of me.
There's a switch on those that you can turn the sound off.
I, I should, if I shut this off.
I think it's under your left thumb. There you go.
It's alright, mine did it last meeting.
I'm thirty, it's time to take the pills.
There you go.
This report is eleven megabytes, mostly because it has a bunch of maps in it. The reason it's being brought up in two thousand eighteen is that back in two thousand fifteen, we provided it to the select board and, and virtually no action was taken. More recently, our assessor has pointed out that if the town were to have a, uh, solar system on its own property and produce electricity, she estimated, um, this is, um, is it Elaine Peterson?
Diane.
Diane Peterson. Diane Peterson estimated about thirty thousand dollars an acre. Now, that's going down with time, so I'm not gonna hold her to that, but, um, it's a sizable amount of money. So if we could find a system or a candidate for a system, candidate location for a system, um, we may be explored further. And so, um, Ryan had initiated an effort to do this and I reminded him that this report existed. He didn't know about it 'cause it wasn't here then. And so I've resurrected it and, uh, put it together. And I'll be forwarding it to him and I wanted all, all the board to know about it before I did that, okay? And I think, um, I, Bill Murray's gonna confirm that I have the right report and the pages are in the right order. And then we'll post it on the website. So, uh, I got some work, I've been working on that and I've got a little more work to go and then we, it'll be postable.
Did you say sites had been located, identified?
Yeah, he, he, uh, identified candidate sites.
Okay.
He had criteria, uh, you know, it has to have the right kind of power on the poles out in front and it has to be big enough and it has to be owned by the town and he had a set of criteria and it's all in the report. I'm not doing it justice. He did a pretty good job. And, um, the extent to which there were candidate sites eliminated and some floated to the top is, is pretty good. And, um, it's three years old, but I don't think much has changed. And so, as soon as I am certain that I've got all the pages and it's all together right, I'm gonna give it to Christina and we'll post it on the website. Because it's eleven megabytes. I'm not gonna pass it around to everybody.
Okay. She could send us the PDF of it, though.
It's still eleven megabytes. Let me, let me, just give me about a week and I'll post it and then everybody can see it. Dumping it into your email, you run the risk of me updating it and then you don't have the right one and, you know? With my rule of only put the document in one place, I think that's the way to do it.
Who initiated this again? This query?
Planning board did.
The planning board.
In two thousand fifteen, maybe two thousand fourteen. We've been pushing the idea that the town can get very favorable rewards for doing such a thing.
His, it's probably an out-of-order question, but I'm gonna chance it. Has the planning board ever conducted a similar survey for cell towers which provide revenue to the town?
Yes, we have cell, we have cell tower designated spots. I don't, I don't know a lot about that. That was, that was a long time ago and none have ever been built.
It falls under the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Cell tower applications.
Okay, but, but it's been done. But, okay.
And we had one application and, uh, I thi, I think it might have been AT&T, but, uh, it never, never went to building it.
You know, there are people that market cell tower sites that go around and, I know, 'cause our church had packed and you used one. And I really think the cell tower receptionist town's terrible.
You're not alone, but let me make an, let me offer something. You said your question might be out of order. It's not on the agenda.
Yes.
Why don't we, uh, take your question as something that should be addressed next time? And we'll pull up the locations and we'll follow up on your, your hint or your suggestion that there are firms that may be able to help us with that, marketing firms.
That'd be good. I don't wanna step on the ZBA's toes if they're doing it, but somebody ought to do something about it.
Maybe we just resurrect it and push it to the ZBA. I don't know, but I think the topic deserves to be next agenda.
Thank you.
I think we just give away our cell phones.
Solar bylaw. We, in June, um, went over, well, actually, for many months, from about October to May, we reviewed the solar bylaw at the suggestion of citizens or a citizen. And they made suggestions and we incorporated those suggestions and then we went a little bit beyond their suggestions and produced the bylaw we have today. Now, help me, Christina, you, uh, were gonna copy.
It's in your packet. It looks like this. This is, uh, article five of that warrant of what was corrected.
Ah, here it is. Thank you, very much.
It's in the package. It's in my packet, yeah.
Yeah.
It looks, as I said, it looks like this. It looks like it just starts in the middle, but that's because it does.
Well, what it is.
I wasn't gonna print out nineteen pages.
Good, Mark, get page eleven on it.
It's not on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Yes, it is.
There it is.
No, I'm sorry, it's not, I got it, this is not attached to the agenda.
Yeah, what I said in the agenda was that, uh, refer to June fifth, two thousand eighteen, special town meeting warrant, article number five, which you have reproduced on paper.
Yes, and you can find this on the website if you just enter June fifth.
Yeah.
Special town meeting.
It's available. And what this does is it goes through the bylaw and it says, change this wording to that wording. And, and when you do, it'll read like this. And it goes to the next change, change this wording to that wording, and when you do, it'll read like this. And it's a, it's a very clear explanation of the changes. It was done in a very good job by our town clerk and by us. And, um, this is the article and I hope everyone's had a chance to read it. And, um, it explains the changes of two thousand eighteen, which of course are, are changing a law that existed all the way back to, let me get it up here. I think it existed back in twenty ten. What's the, what's the, oh, it's twenty. Yeah, it was adopted June two thousand ten. So, it's been around a while and the two thousand eighteen changes were what was voted on last June. Kendall and I, of course, lived through it, so we've seen it all before, but the other members of the board may not have given it close scrutiny.
These are incorporated into the, yes.
Yeah, this, this was the vote.
So I did read the bylaw and I see where you picked these up, so.
It's a, it's a two-thirds vote of the, of the town meeting.
Yep.
And then it goes to the attorney general.
Yep.
And they review it and give it a stamp of approval or rejection. In this case, it was, it was approved. And it became effective, I'm not sure it became effective on the date of the vote or the date of the, um, AG approval, but it is nevertheless today approved. And it appears in its revised condition in our latest zoning bylaws, article twenty.
Comments on my review?
Please, yeah.
Um, so, so I put, you know, it was Bill Murray who brought this to our attention last time. And I thought, his concern was that you would see these, you know, two-acre parcels scattered in neighborhoods with solar arrays.
Ed Blanchard.
I'm sorry. Dotted down a name and it wasn't yours. Ed, Ed Blanchard. I don't know anybody in town, it's so annoying. I'm sorry, Ed.
That's alright.
It was Ed Blanchard's concern and I guess you, you have some expertise from your being on the board and being a Realtor and so on, that you would have, since the minimum, it can be built on as small an area as two acres, but can only cover a quarter of that area. Twenty foot, the footprint of the voltaic array can only be twenty thousand square feet, which would be a quarter of an acre on a two-acre parcel. So, but, his, his feeling is that, you know, do you really want, you have a leftover, sort of undes, not as desirable lot in a subdivision, but it's got the two acres, somebody could just buy it and put it, a solar array and it would disrupt the character of the neighborhood. So I don't, I mean, listen to that, I also, the minimum setbacks are listed as seventy-five feet because it, it, the setback is the same for a house. Says the same, it's a setback line is, from the front is the same. And then fifty feet from the back and sidelines, uh, we, and, which is, which is odd because that's only thirty feet in a residential area. So that's bigger, but the front yard setback is not bigger. And then the screening requirement is one point.
Where are you reading this?
The bylaw.
Just from the bylaw.
Well, is it a change?
No.
Was it always been that way?
It's been that way.
Oh, okay. I, I was thinking we were reviewing this article five of the warrant.
What, um, you know, what struck me, I guess, 'cause it was my first reading of it and what if anything could be changed? And I did think, I mean, truly my, my view was, well, I didn't realize it had just been put in because I did this prior to getting it. That you do have layers of protection and you do have, it has gotta go through site plan review and it's gotta go through, um, community impact analysis, which is part of our bylaw.
Yep.
So you've got a special, and, and it requires a special permit. So the levels of scrutiny before you would approve it are special permit, site plan approval, environmental, community, impact, analysis. They're required. Now, now, I see from this amendment that some of those were just added in. They weren't required probably while, like this array was built.
No, they were required.
All, all, all of those were?
Yeah, you, um, I provided the changes in article five for this agenda because I thought what we were saying was, last year we reviewed the law and upgraded it and I thought the board wanted to see those upgrades, which is different than going back to two thousand ten and reviewing the bumper-to-bumper bylaw. If you'll recall, Kendall said, you know, we just finished.
I know he's gonna kill himself if we do this again.
So, I'm, I'm not anxious to go back through the whole law, um, any more than Kendall was.
Nor is that, nor is that my, uh, my request either. Like to make a small presentation, I've done some homework on, on what other towns have in this area.
Well, I guess I'm not prepared to do that tonight. Can you submit your presentation? We could do it next time?
Sure.
Yeah, but it's nine o'clock. Uh, and, and you didn't tell us ahead of time, so, um, I, I, I mean, I could make a presentation too. I got slides, I got everything on solars, but I'm not prepared to discuss that tonight. Let's keep it to the definition of the.
I'll submit the material you're asking for then and.
Yeah, please. If, if that's okay with you, I, um, and then, uh, can you come back next time or are you gonna be in the keys?
No, I won't be back. Unless you have a meeting between now and the year, year end. I'll be able to say, wish you all a merry Christmas and be gone.
Yeah, thank you, Ed and your family.
Four months.
Wow, nice.
Four months?
Sounds like fun.
Sure.
And here's, 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 uh, here's some extra copies for the members who aren't here.
Okay, so, um. we've done a very extensive review. Like I say, there was a citizen who wanted something, changes made. Her concerns were mostly this idea that it's viewable from the street or from a neighboring property. Uh, on page thirteen of the handout. You know, the third page of the handout is number thirteen, where it's screening and buffering. We, we tried to address that. And we removed by right and replaced it with by special permit. And of course, special permit contains those other things, so community impact statement and environmental statements and groundwater, service water runoff and et cetera.
Does Ed have a copy of this?
Pardon me?
Could you give him a copy of this?
Well, it's in, it's in, it's on the web.
The whole, the whole package though, but maybe I could give him my copy.
Sure, it's on the web, I'll be.
This is what was done recently to, last year.
It was the town meeting.
Yeah, I, I have a copy of Article five.
Well, you have a copy.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Thank you though.
It's in the town meeting warrant.
I'd also like to submit some pictures if I could, uh,
Sure.
because there was a concern as to visual from the street of solar farms.
Yep.
So.
Would you like me to copy them for you, Ed? That way you don't have to leave your pictures.
I can give them to you.
Oh, okay.
Sure.
You still using film camera, Ed? Or do you have it electronic?
No, this is my Polaroid.
If you have them electronic, uh, put them in an email to, to, and then she can, uh, put them in the file and.
Well, you, you can have these and I can send them electronically if required, but.
There's ninety-one, um, Williamsville.
What? This is ninety-one Williamsville?
Yeah.
Oh, but you went up on their property.
Is that the berm, the so-called berm?
I'm standing on the street.
Wait, oh, this is ninety-one. This is Seaboard. Yeah, this is the problem. Yeah, I agree with you. I thought you meant ninety-five.
And, and you see this house up here?
Yep, that's up on Mayo Road.
How, how, how much of that field you think is visible by that house?
Well, that's not by our bylaw. That was a violation.
What?
He was fined by the Concom. Or my understanding is he was fined.
What, for building the house?
No, Ed, for cutting down the trees illegally or inappropriately.
Well, you know, there's, I, I guess when I saw that, I said, boy, if that were my house, I'd really be concerned about having a look at.
I believe the owners, I believe the owners took some actions with the developer.
Okay. And here's pictures of, on Garden Road, from the road, so, you know, they are visible.
Now, when were these taken, Ed?
Um, two days ago. Yeah, it's snowing ground.
Yeah, but they should be, the screening is specified in the bylaw, there to be evergreen trees.
Well, these are the access roads. See the telephone poles? You can't, by law, you can't block the access road. They have to be able to get in there with a, uh, what do they call those things?
Okay, so that's not the public street, it's the access road.
Right, the public street is Route sixty-eight right out here. You've probably driven a bike many, many times.
They're taken, they're taken from, they're taken from Route sixty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's an accurate, accurate portrayal.
When we said that they aren't visible, you know, I'm just saying that some of them are. This one, uh, this one is far enough in so you only see the poles. And this is the other one up on Williamsville, which is, is set way back inside. These are not taken from the, from Williamsville road.
That's ninety-five or?
E ninety.
Ninety-one is Seaboard.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So those three are ninety-five.
Good.
So the concern is, the concern is that.
Okay, Ed, we're, we're not gonna make the presentation. Let's, let's, um, thank you for your contributions and we'll read them all over and we'll get back to you and we'll discuss it next time. Even later now. Returning to the agenda, we had the Article five. The board needs a chance to review this. I hope everyone's read it.
Here we go.
Christine, thanks for these pictures, Ed.
Can we keep those?
Can we keep them better?
May we keep these?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The, uh, the focus I thought of tonight, I thought the focus was reviewing the changes that we made last spring. And these are what's shown in this handout. Does anybody have any comments on the actual agenda handout? Article five.
I don't. We've been over it.
Yeah, I guess I don't either. I, in fact.
No, I understand. I just didn't understand that it was limited to, I didn't understand what the discussion was, just limited to those improvements. I, but I learned, I read the whole installation and I, I mean, the whole bylaw.
Well, I, I think everybody should read the whole bylaw.
And I do think the improvements were, did have, did give you more layers of protection. But I think there's some, I think we could, we should allow at some point, Ed, to speak.
Oh, yeah.
When he comes back, because there may be our further improvements that could be made.
Well, Ed has, I think, uh, points to make and would be glad to accept them. But, um, I have very little appetite for going through this law yet again. And also, a lot of people don't understand that, um, according to state law, there are commercial activity that's allowed in residential agricultural zone properties. And that's by state law. And you see them around town. The biggest one is agriculture. And in my reading of various things, the term used to describe large scale photovoltaic installations is sometimes solar farm. And that word farm is used for a particular purpose. It's, it's a passive activity. You plant the corn and then you watch it grow. Well, you plant the solar cells and then you watch them grow. There's no, uh, trucks in and out every day and, you know, it's a passive activity. And that's why the state looked favorably on, um, allowing it by state law. I think it's farming, solar farms and daycare facilities, I think.
That have a super protection.
Yeah, and, uh, so that's what, you know, if, if we're gonna do something radically different than the state law, I think we have an uphill battle. And what we have done is protect the town quite effectively. And the applicant, every applicant we've had, we may have missed something in our review processes, but every applicant we've had has made an effort to comply. And Seaboard Solar is really not our favorite one, so. If we're ready to move on, we got a budget to build.
Let me, uh, just make, um, one final comment. Regarding that, yes, the state law says that they're allowable, but every town has the right to decide on where they're allowed and whether it's an overlay district or whether it's in commercial or, you know, and I repeat, uh, as I have before, to have these available in the town senate district, to have these available in, in residencies. If you look at my report there, it'll show that a lot of communities don't allow them in residential areas. So we have the right to do it. It's just depending, depending upon what the townspeople would like.
Yeah, and in June two thousand eighteen, by two thirds of the majority, two thirds of the law, they passed these bylaws. And it's the third bylaw that went past, modifications of it.
By your, by your survey in two thousand seventeen, seventy-eight percent of the people said that they enjoy living in Hubbardston due to its rural character. And in Article twenty, which is large scale score solar photovoltaic installations, it says, these standards address public safety and minimize impacts on scenic, natural and historic resources. That's, that's supposed to be the goal. Well, historic section is, is our town center, which they're allowed. And scenic and natural beauty, I would submit that if we do those in, in, in residential areas, I, I, I look at it as a positive for the planning board too, because everyone who applies for one in a residential area, you, you guys are gonna have to go through hoops because everybody's gonna come out of the woodwork and say, no, not here, perhaps.
This is an eight-year-old law. I, I, I'd just like to kind of freeze it for now.
No, it's not an eight-year-old law because you just passed this at the last town meeting.
No, it was passed in two thousand ten. And we made modifications.
Well, the major modifications are.
These are not major modifications. These are word nitpicking and, and some effective changes, but a lot of it's just rearranging words. I lived through it. I'd like to just say that the townspeople have spoken. And if I can make an analogy, it's a little bit like the cell towers. We made the cell tower laws so restrictive that we didn't get one because people, you know, fifteen years ago thought they were ugly. And now we wish we had one. So, these things come and go. But the people have pretty much spoken numerous times. And did you go to the town meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, then I think you heard some opinions. Alright, we gotta get to a budget. We got three or four more items here. Planning board budget. Can you bring us up to speed on that, please, Christine?
Okay, um, here's what happened. Uh, the town budget was sent, or the request for a budget from each board was sent around. Uh, I thought that it was being sent not just to myself, but also to my board.
No problem.
Uh, because it was BCC'd. I did not forward it on to you, um, which was brought, Tom brought up to me and I'm like, oh, I thought you had it.
Did you guys get the budget? No, from Ryan or?
No, this would have been what you got. If you got anything, it would have been this.
But it would have been under Ryan's memory, right?
Yes, Ryan would have sent it. So that was my misunderstanding.
Somewhere in November.
I don't believe I did.
This one?
Yes.
It's in the package though now.
Well, it's in the package, but.
Right.
Did you get an email on it?
No, no, so that was my misunderstanding. I wasn't aware who it was sent to, so I didn't immediately reforward it to you.
It's not your fault. Please don't apologize for that.
Um, so that's why it got added on to the agenda sort of last minute, is we really need to review this because it's due to, um, it's due by the twentieth of December. As you can see, it went on the twenty-sixth, so it's only been about, you know, a week and a half since it's been in my possession, but. And from the most part, they're just, um, the page two, which is actually page nineteen, just the whole document they sent out with everybody's budget, is, um, showing what we've done for the last three years and basically saying, based on that data, do we want to just carry forward last year's budget into next year? And that's what, um, Ryan is suggesting basically on that first page is, um, there was some guidance about not,
I think it was in his cover letter.
The board of selectmen and finance committee have indicated they are looking for level funded department requests, i.e. keeping it on the level.
Do you have a cover letter from him?
It's this, this is the cover letter.
Oh, it is, okay. Oh, there it is.
And on the back, it says that, that thing about level funded.
Yep.
Question Christine.
Yes.
Does this, does this money, do we put our revenue that, that gets paid to us into this budget or is that separate?
I'm sorry.
Somebody comes in with a subdivision plan.
Okay.
So it's a thousand dollar application fee and does that go into this budget?
It does not.
It goes into a separate fund?
Yes.
So this, okay.
This is the money that is voted to the planning board for their use, but things like the monitute, regional planning distribution is actually a fee that's charged by the MRPC every year. So that money basically stays about the same because, um, that's how much they charge us. Um, the planning board expense fund pays for things like, uh, email. Uh, because the planning board has their own emails, so if, you know, we have to vote that so that we have that money available to pay for our email accounts.
That's the planning board expense?
Yes, and things like, uh, I had to get stamps or I had to send out a certified letter. That comes out of planning board expense.
So is this planning board clerk you?
That is me, yes. And if you're wondering why the FY expended was so low, they hired me pretty late in the year.
Wow. Why was nothing spent on professional land planning?
I'm not certain.
Where is that? Oh.
The first line.
Professional land planning is, for instance, uh, Bill Murray, um, generating the report on candidate sites for solar.
But we're making the applicant do that.
No, you didn't, you didn't understand what I said or I didn't say it right. We produced the assessment for the installation of photovoltaic solar facilities for the town of Hubbardston, this big report, the eleven megabyte.
Oh, 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 okay.
That's an example of where we spent some professional land planning money.
Okay, I got it.
And, um, we can spend some more of that, uh, for this year. We have to be judicious. It's not very much money.
So, so this was commissioned prior to two thousand seventeen or he hasn't been paid yet?
No, what you're seeing is the expended for two thousand seventeen. You don't have the budgeted column for two thousand seventeen. You have the expended for two thousand seventeen, budgeted for two thousand eighteen, expended for two thousand eighteen, budgeted for two thousand nineteen, expended so far for FY two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, I'm not sure we budgeted anything in seventeen. But we are in nineteen now.
And nothing's been expended in seventeen, eighteen or nineteen?
For that account, that's correct.
Also look at eighteen and say, nothing's been budgeted. See it?
I do. I'm just wondering where the money came to pay for his report on site. Oh, that, was that our report?
It could come out of our expenses. That's probably why we introduced the line of professional land planning, because we saw a need for that. We didn't want to take it out of our expenses.
I'm just questioning, is he, it was, do we commission that report?
Yes.
Okay, and has he been paid for it yet?
Yes.
It may have come out of a grant also. I don't know, I haven't found that information yet.
Okay. So it isn't something that we need to think about, making sure we have funds on hand to pay next year? This could be other things for other things that come up.
We're not gonna do it over again, that's what you mean.
Yeah, this could be for other things.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, the question is, do we level fund it or do we bump it in any particular area that is already identified? Or do we add a new area, um, something that we, we feel needed? I'll just let that question sit there for a minute.
Can we add a line that says for possible unexpected expenses?
Well, if we have expenses and there's an expenses line, if we don't think that's enough to cover both expected and unexpected, then we should up it. But we shouldn't add a new line for unexpected.
Okay.
If it's the expense, it's an expense.
I believe at present we put about, uh, five hundred dollars into email addresses a year, so that's where half of the expense money goes.
Yes, now we're paying for our own, uh, town emails, which I think was a good thing. I don't know if all other boards also pay for theirs, but for some reason the planning board had to pay for theirs. And we did. But is your number right? I thought it was.
It's about ten dollars a month for each account.
Oh, okay, so there's six or seven of us and seven times nine, about a thousand dollars. Eight, what'd you say, eight hundred something?
I said five to six hundred, but I may be.
Well, ten times twelve is a hundred and twenty.
Christina, you have to have an account too.
Times.
I do.
So there's five of us.
And there's one, so it's six.
So there's six. And we have an associate member.
That's seven hundred and twenty.
We actually haven't, uh, voted for that extra email address. We have to do that because it's in, in money involved.
With an associate, it'll be eight hundred and forty. That pretty much gobbles up our expenses.
So maybe we need to beef that up a bit.
Yeah, I'd do two things. I'd, I'd make a, make a motion that we either increase our expenses by the amount of the email that's been imposed upon us, eight hundred and forty. Or we go to Ryan and say, why is the planning board paying for that? Does, do other boards, Council on Aging, uh, if they have town emails, does, you know, psych board, I don't know who else has them. But if no other board is paying for them, why aren't they coming out of the central email fund instead of our individual board account? why aren't they coming out of the central email fund instead of our individual board account? So that's two choices. Hell of a motion. How about this?
How?
How about this? We just asked Christina to check it out with Ryan.
Not only that, um, I'd like to bring your attention to the second page, the fourth paragraph down. All departments should also plan on attending two meetings about their budgets, one with the town administrator and one with finance committee. Uh, the meeting with the town administrator is supposed to be scheduled for the week of, um, January seventh through eleventh. So if you have any questions or concerns after, this is after your proposed budget has been submitted. Um, it'll go through Ryan, and you'll get to talk about it then, and he'll tell you either whether it's reasonable or not, and then after that, um, it'll be presented, and then you can meet with the finance committee to review the final budget. So that's what he'd like to do, to make sure that nobody thinks that he's just being the final arbiter of the budget, he wants you, the, the boards, if they want to. If they have any discussions or concerns, to meet with both himself and the, uh, finance committee.
Seems to me more effective to meet with Ryan before December twentieth than after.
Well, I think this is gonna sort of, I guess, be the prospective budget, until you meet with Ryan and it gets sort of a little more solidified.
So Tom, why don't we request, the budget is thousand as it stands, right? So why don't we put in a request for one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars? And let them come back at all, and then they say, ask for an explanation, we've got the explanation, and if they want to handle it differently.
Alright.
So I would make a motion that we increase in the budget, the planning board expenses to one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars to cover the cost of member email accounts.
Very good. Uh, second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thanks, Alice. Um, does anybody else have any, uh, specific estimatable, you know, you really kind of have a sense of what the number is, uh, items?
For the budget.
Yeah, for the, for this, this item that's before us on this agenda.
Excuse me, may I take that to say that I should go ahead and, and process the request for the extra emailing account?
Not yet, we're not done.
Oh, okay. No, I mean, not obviously right now.
No, but yes, yes, but.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yes, that means you're authorized to fill in the number and submit it to Ryan when we submit this.
No, I meant the new email account. I have to post a request to Laurie.
Oh, you mean the, uh, yeah, let's make it effective, uh, January first or something. Well, I guess, I don't know, what have we done? We've, we've expended eighty-five dollars of the budget in two thousand nineteen.
Mm-hmm.
Through what date? Is this the first quarter, second quarter?
Through, I think this is through, um.
Eleven twenty-one.
Yeah, that's when it was printed.
That's when it was printed, but it says update, uh, I don't see any other date on it, so it might be as accurate as he could've made it.
When, when did they start charging us for email?
It doesn't look like they have yet.
Or they haven't yet, no, it hasn't gone through. And that's another question, is how much of our expenses do we actually spend outside of emails? Because if we only spend two hundred dollars a month, you know, a year, in a, alternate expenses, then asking for an extra thousand, uh, we have to be able to substantiate that. I could look into the numbers and find out, aside from emails, how much money we spend.
Do we, do you have to pay copy fees? Do you have like a key card with the copy or anything?
Yeah.
No. No, aside from things like stamps and certified letters, there's really nothing.
It's all on the town. No, but even that, we, uh.
That can add on.
That, well, no, but that is paid for by the applicant, in most cases.
Yes. Well, the, the only one I've done was not, but.
What was it?
The one for, to C board. You had it be certified mail, so I sent it to C board.
Oh, yeah, the five dollars sixty cents or something, yeah.
Yes, that's it.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, and if you wanna do any more amendments to the zoning bu- you know, there, there are things that we may want to.
No, I know, I'm not, I'm not arguing. I'm just saying that if we're gonna try and provide evidence, if they could look back at our budgets and realize that the eight hundred dollars has been spent by emails, and then the only two hundred has been spent by alternative things, I'm just pointing at it.
Who covers, who covers, like, if your computer dies, getting a new computer?
It's the town administrator.
I T, there's an I T account.
I T.
Okay. I just don't understand.
Yeah.
The town also has a procedure that if you go over your budget amount, uh, you can file with the finance committee and give them, like, if the computer died and you had to get one, you can submit that, and the finance committee has a reserve fund.
Okay.
So that if you had your budget a thousand, and you had unexpected expenses of five hundred, you can just submit those to the finance committee, and they review them, and if they're in order, they take those funds from the reserve and put them into your account to pay for.
But it, it, it's not a bottomless pit, it's meant to be exceptional, you know, an exceptional, uh, cost, like a broken computer.
You said, I was just bringing that up, I didn't wanna, I wasn't trying to argue, I just.
What, what, uh, I have a little project that I, I'd like to try to get off the ground. I tried to budget money for it last year, and it, it somehow got wiggled around and ended up in the, I think it ended up in the I T account. But, um, we have vast amounts of paper files, and they're not well organized, because we have moved our offices around time after time, and the file cabinets move, and people, um, I think, try to consolidate things and get rid of extra copies and whatnot. There's a whole process to do that, you know, you don't, can't just throw anything away, it has to go through a process, but. I was on a campaign to get our files scanned and electrically, electronically filed, and the ultimate goal being, um, access, searchability, easy to find, remote access. Uh, our customers are the general public, they wanna come in and see a personal, a, a property file that would tell them all about the property. It would show the building permits and the special permits and the whatever happened on that property historically. They call them the street files. Really, it's a property file, it's identified by street and number, it's got a folder, and it contains all this stuff. Today, if a member of the public wants access to that stuff, they have to physically come here. Which is kinda, in this world, you know, you can't, you should be able to call something up on the web. They don't, they don't come here for a copy of the bylaws. We're gonna charge them thirty-five dollars, they can go on the web and print them out themselves. So it would be good, I think, for a number of reasons. One is that access, searchability, um, records, security. Right now, if someone comes in and wants to look at these documents in this paper folder, they have to be observed during their, um, perusal of the files, because all this stuff is the originals, and we can't have something get lost. And it's a, I don't know how many hours it consumes of, of the collective staff there, but I'm certain it's some hours. And, um, the, the, the combination of impediments to getting at the information kind of goes against the open world and transparent world approach. And so I had, uh, monies put in to do scanning, and, um, uh, it's, I mean, scanning is the least of it. What it really is, is structuring a, um, file system for the street files that would, um, allow external access, searchability, organization, updating, all the things that file systems have to have. And I've asked Christina to look into this, because it's a last year's project. And she is, but the first steps are, you know, what software would you use, and all this kind of stuff. When we get to the point where we could implement it, I'd like to take a street, I don't know, Main Street, and, and scan them, and, and build a prototype file access system, see how it works, and, and if it works good enough, expand it. The alternative, of course, is to go to some other town and steal one. You know, ask them, how do they do it? And if it works real good, you adopt their software and their methodology, and it gets you up off the ground real quick. And, um, so that's what Christina's kindly doing right now. But next year, we may have some significant expenditures. Um, there's companies that will scan things. Some of these are oversized files, we're gonna have to go and get them done some other way than an eight and a half by eleven. That's my little speech. I would hope that we could put some money in to move us towards that. And ultimately, what I would love would be, if the planning board is successful with this concept, it moves to other parts of the town. Uh, you know, some other department may be able to spring off it.
Are all, all papers, or all files or papers in, in this town? There's no electronic filing and?
Very few.
Like the building department or?
Building department does have, uh, an online, so does the assessors office. They have online documentation and records keeping.
Okay.
It's, it's mainly the street files. Uh, the planning d- board has a, a little, a certain amount of electronic files, but a lot of ours are still paper, especially maps.
What I'd like to do is maybe pass a motion tonight for some money, also pass a motion that, a separate motion, that as of the first of the year, all applicants have to come with a paper if they want, or a paper in the, in the old-fashioned sense, but they must submit a thumb drive or something with the electronic files on it. All the drawings already electronic. I don't wanna take paper in and then scan it, I wanna ask them for their electronic files. Which of course, they have, because that's how they do business.
But, I'm just trying to understand this, I'm not a techie.
Well, it doesn't have to be.
If people come and, if they say, if they send her a PDF of their submission, that uses our, our allotment of email?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Can they do that? Can they file electronically through PDFs and through?
Yes, or they could come and hand us a thumb drive.
Either way, okay, alright.
Yeah, but they'll, they'll still have reg- an obligation to give us the paper.
Yes, it is server space, and it's something that we'll have to dis- discuss, because at the moment, um, Hubbardston, uh, the, the website for Hubbardston, like, all the archive files have to be on a separate server, because if we kept all of them on one server, the entire thing, it didn't matter if you'd be looking for one, the scenic road bylaw. Suddenly, it would take you ten minutes, because the entire server would slow down. So at the moment, it's, it's not just finding a, a way to do it, but a way to do it that would integrate it with our current system. And that's something that will have to be an integrated task, because the si- the, uh, road files that are in there, or the street files, are sort of a joint, they belong to everybody. It's a matter of figuring out how we're going to integrate that system with what we already have, because at the moment, there's nothing online that says, oh, do you wanna see your house? Go here. You know, do you wanna see all the permits for your house? Go here.
Yeah, and, and if they have to be on a separate server, so be it. The separate server that functions as our archive is accessible through the regular portal of the, of the website. You just have to go and say, I want to go back to the archive, and up comes the archival server information. Like real old meeting minutes from two thousand six or something.
Okay.
Um, but this might be a little bit of a dream, and I'm not a techie enough to know how to do it right. I was asking Christina to go off and search other towns that do this kind of thing, and, uh, formulate a position, start accepting applications, both paper the old way and electronic, so we don't have to scan anything from a certain point on. We only have to go backwards. And, and then, how do you build a file system? How do you make external access? I don't know if there's something confidential that you don't show, but everything in the street files is public, so.
It's also a matter of, a lot of our applications are not fillable. So it's not, so i- i- if they were to send us something in PDF, they would've literally had to print it out at home, fill it out by hand, scan it themselves, and then email it to me.
Scan. And email it back.
Yeah.
So it'd be one thing, I believe there's something in the works to get all of our forms online and fillable, so that people can actually go online and fill them out. So we don't actually.
Is that something we would have to pay for?
No, that's in the works with the town administrator. That's not our follow-up.
But, you know, this is.
So do you wanna put extra money in for the, that project this year, starter money?
Yeah, I don't have any idea how much it is. I mean, last year, I think I put in twelve thousand dollars, and it was kind of rejected and not understood, and it didn't happen, you know? Obviously, it didn't happen, it's not in two thousand nineteen. And that might be a lot. What we might do is set more, um, a, a lower expectation. In other words, we put some money in to figure it out. Which is different than do it.
Meaning the man-hours.
So maybe like twenty-five hundred for a pilot study on how to archive, convert our paper files to.
The research, yeah. We'd write a, we'd, maybe we could meet and write a little spec, like it has to be accessible from the outside world. Because that's the whole purpose of it. If I lived in Wex- Westford and I wanted to come over here to see a file, I gotta drive an hour and a half? Let's just go on the web. You know, uh.
But, but you're probably gonna have to consult with some I T people just to figure out how to do it.
Absolutely.
Not only that, I'll have to talk to Laurie and Ryan regarding what their plans are for the system as well, because I know that they're scanning files now too, and we don't wanna be stepping on their toes. Or if there's multiple departments working on the same project, you don't wanna be overlapping with money.
No, well, not with money, but you don't, you, you can overlap with money, but you can't, we don't wanna do things twice.
Well, and we also have to build a slightly different system.
Yeah, we need.
Because we, you know, I mean, if you think of the assessors, they've got a database.
Yes.
It's very set, it's X number of parcels in town.
Right.
And then they farm out from that, but our files won't look like that.
No, and not only that, but they'd have to be updated in the same way that the ones that are in there are, like if somebody files an A N R. Whose responsibility is it gonna be then to go into the street file and grab the files that are associated with lot number X, and associate the correct ones with lot number X and Y? So it's not just creating it, it's also maintaining and updating it.
It's all of that, and just as the assessors have a fixed amount of land, and they have their fixed.
Yeah.
Maps and pages and whatnot, so do we. Everything that we accept here as an application relates to a map and parcel number. Street address, you know, it's, it's something relatable, and, uh, there is a thing called the street list. And, uh, we, we have, we have the foundation, I think, to work off of, but I think we ought to put some money in. It might be a dead end, but I think we ought to put some money in to coordinate with what the town's doing as a whole, looking at it through planning board eyeballs, you know, and, and what we think we need, and then figure-it-out money, not do-it money. Do-it money might be fifty thousand dollars, but figure-it-out money might be five thousand dollars. I'm only pulling these numbers out of the air. Yes, sir.
The technology for records management systems, as specifically with regards to towns, has, has been in existence for quite some time. I understand that the town here does not have it currently implemented, but plenty of towns have it, and there's commercial sites. If you wish, um, I can, uh, lead you to some, uh, sites that can actually provide you with that information. You can probably even get some literature, bring it to the board, and at that point in time, be able to present, uh, potential options. These options are certainly ones where you can get a salesperson, they're always happy to sell, come in, give you a spiel, give you an estimate, and at that point in time, provide you with the differentiation of their product versus other ones. Uh, I hear you, I, I think it's a great idea, uh, it's, it's, it's a long time coming, uh, and more importantly, I think that there's a lot less work than you think there is to this here, I, and I understand it from a technology perspective, in that, uh, uh, many towns and many cities especially, uh, across the United States, have confronted this here for a long period of time, and it's a, it's a great idea to, to, to do this here. As to the cost, I cannot tell you, and, uh, it's, it, there's, there's a lot of variability based on the amount of data that you have, uh, what it is that you want, the features, but there's definitely products out there, and, uh, many of them even provide some level of customization.
Right. My only concern is that if it doesn't link, because I've done data transfers between, uh, databases, is if we can't link it to a pre-existing database, um, we're gonna have the problem that we're gonna be doing a lot of manual entry. And manual entry is gonna cost money, not from the technology standpoint, but by the man-hours and the possible, uh, room for error.
There, there is, the devil is in the details, as they always say.
Yeah.
And those are the types of pieces of information that, again, somebody will come in to you.
Mm-hmm.
More than likely, you're looking for a turnkey solution.
Mm-hmm.
Which is not only bringing in the software, but potentially even doing all of the scanning, and there are companies that will actually do that for you at a fixed cost. Again, they assess what it is that you have and come back with a bid. I think, let's not put the cart in front of the horse, let me get you some information.
I appreciate that.
And based on that, I think bringing that to the board with potential alternatives that can be potentially palatable.
Mm-hmm.
I think that might be a way to kickstart this year.
Fantastic.
The problem is how do we do that by the twentieth, which is the deadline.
Oh, no, 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 we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have money.
You're not trying to do it this year, alright. Okay, okay, I didn't understand that. I didn't understand that. Okay, okay.
No, no. We're gonna have to figure it out, money.
We're gonna research this year.
Yeah, we're gonna research, but the most important thing is, and, and I appreciate very much what you said, Francois, but when a salesman comes in, the first thing he says to you is, what are you trying to do? You have to have an understanding of what you want.
Yeah.
And that's writing the spec for the system.
Or the request for proposal.
That's where I mean, by figure it out, that's what I really meant.
Right.
We write down, what do we want? And then if Ryan buys a, a, a whole-town solution, we have our, this is what we want it to do, you know, and if we buy one, this is what we want it to do, you gotta write down what you want. You gotta understand what you really are trying to accomplish. You gotta understand what you really are trying to accomplish. And maybe you don't bite off the whole thing, you know, you only do some of what you want. But Christine's background, if you've read her resume, is is, uh, data management, database management. And, um, I think she can help us very much with the, what do we want, as part of this. You know, by talking to other towns and and not necessarily figuring out what product they use, but what do they do with it, you know?
That's fine, I thought you were looking for money to appropriate.
Well, I think the money is something like five thousand dollars, you know? It's not, it's not the system-wide solution, it's it's the figure it out money. And we also have a little money now that we can use to figure it out, because as Christina reported, um, we haven't spent all of her labor, uh, in the first three months, where we've got a little quote, extra in the remaining months.
Actually, that's already been appropriated, that's why I'm working fifteen hours a week.
Well, it's been appropriated, but, um, we can re-appropriate it.
Oh, okay, just let me know how many hours I'm working.
No, 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 I'm not talking about more hours, I'm not talking about more hours.
I know, you're talking about fewer hours.
No, I'm talking about what you do with the hours.
Oh, okay.
So are we looking for her, for her line item, which is the planning board clerk wage? Eleven thousand five hundred, are we looking to increase that, or?
I think what we do is we put it in expenses. And if we spend it as clerk wages, or Bill Murray wages, or some consultant's wages, or or a disk of some kind of a little system, then it's an expense. I don't think we put it directly in the wage, cause then it would only be able to be spent by wage.
But this is a one-line item that's specifically the clerk.
Up above, there's a planning board expense. I think we add more money to that line.
We did, well, we already added the
Right, we add some more.
Eight forty.
Add some more.
Okay.
Four or five thousand dollars.
Fine with me, I don't know whether, and you're gonna say.
Oh, I don't know if it's the right number.
Well, I mean, when you're asked for the justification, so it's, it it'll be, so it will include consultation on record keeping and consultation.
Yeah, I have a write-up that I used last year, helped distribute it, and next month, we can, we can further define it so that we are able to justify it by, what was the date, January? December twentieth. Oh, we'll get the money in by December twentieth, but then he wanted to meet with us. And when he meets with us, between January seven and eleven, we'll have our story together.
So do you wanna change this from eighteen forty to five thousand?
Well, we had one thousand in the base, eight forty was added to it, and another four or five thousand dollars, what do you think? I'm I'm thinking that five thousand dollars in a year is, uh, uh, twenty dollars an hour. That's a hundred and fifty hours. That's only three hours, three hours a week. So, that's not very much money, we should be able to spend it effectively. Five thousand?
Yeah.
Make a motion, we add five thousand dollars to the expenses line. Fifty-seven hundred, planning board expense, for the purposes of developing the specs for the, for an electronically, digital and electronically accessible file.
I'll second that.
Before we vote, point of discussion, so it's eight, it's eight forty plus five thousand, you're gonna dedicate that five thousand to this project.
It's one thousand base.
Yep.
It's eight forty email.
Yep.
And it's five thousand project.
Okay, fine. So, I'm ready to vote, to do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Did that motion make sense, and do you, can you transcribe it?
And the other line items, professional planning, you're gonna leave it with fifteen hundred again, top?
Yes, I don't see any reason to.
Okay.
Change it, cause, uh, maybe when we meet with Bill Murray next, we can just touch base with that. Touch base on that subject, so that we're ready to talk to Ryan in January.
Okay, and do we know what Monmouth's assessment will be for twenty twenty?
Every single year, it's been, uh, one thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars, so they put in fifteen hundred.
Okay, fifteen hundred for that line?
I have no indication it's going up this year, so.
Okay, and then?
That generally is a wise use of money, they they provide services for us.
I do, I think they do.
In one case, they provided a grant.
So, and then Christina's salary goes in at eleven thousand five hundred?
I think the instructions are that we don't touch that. We don't have to budget that, isn't that the instruction?
You don't put in wages?
Wages are gonna be handled separately. Salary and wage items, please level fund those items for now unless your budget contains contractually obligated increases.
Okay, so eleven thousand five hundred, so our total budget here, proposed budget is what? Anybody you wanna add it up in?
Well, it's, uh.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Plus eight, eighteen forty. Plus five thousand. Plus one thousand five hundred, Monmouth's it.
And then that's the subtotal, that's the subtotal.
Okay, which is?
Um, nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
And then with, with the clerk wage added to it, it's a total budget of?
Twenty-three thousand something, I can't do that one in my head.
Twenty-two thousand three forty, is that right? Who else is adding this?
I have twenty-one thousand three forty.
Fifteen, uh.
I think you're off, I think I'm right. Zero, zero, four, four, eight and five is thirteen. Oh, maybe you're right.
I used my calculator, I used my phone, I'm sorry, I cheated.
What what is the total?
Twenty-one, three forty, I apologize, I cheated, I was like.
Okay, no, no, that's good, um, so, uh, do we need to take another vote on that for a total budget of twenty-one thousand three forty?
Yeah, I think we need to do two things, we need to have, um, authorize Christine to fill out this form and get it in.
Yes.
To the amounts we just stated.
Okay, make the, make the.
That's the motion, uh, uh, authorize Christina to fill out the forms according to the amounts we just stated. Uh, and that's on, of course, the tape, the record. So, um, that's the motion.
Second.
Seconded it, please. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's okay with you?
What?
That you fill out this form and we get it in.
No problem, but it's actually this one, page three.
Okay. Fill out that form. And, uh.
So what I'll end up doing is just basically copying these line items onto there, um.
Yeah, if you wanna.
Do you want me to associate, um, in the email, uh, the voted on reasons for these, um, cost increases of these lines, or?
Do they require reasons? I thought the reasons came later.
It has other here, expenses.
Right.
You can break this down this way, post.
We don't have to, no, we can do it all as department line items, like these up here, Alice, which is what the other one looks like.
Is is expenses, one number.
Right.
You don't have to break it down, okay.
Right.
If I'm reading the calendar right, Ryan wants to meet between the seventh and eleventh. By then, we should have had another planning board meeting. So prior to the next planning board meeting, I will distribute, my explanation is primitive as it is, of the justification for the five thousand dollars. And we can look at it in January, agree, and then move, move it to Ryan. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that's the plan, we don't need a motion for it, we'll just do it that way. Then February, uh, moves to the, uh, select board and finance committee. I believe Ryan makes that presentation, and he has a big old spreadsheet for the whole town. And, uh, I think that takes care of our budget process, um, agenda item. Board organization, Craig Bosano, he has for about four meetings now, said he's gonna discuss this. I, uh, haven't heard from him, so we'll have to. I I guess I have done some research, I asked Joyce, is there such a thing as a chair oath? And she said, no. She gave me a copy of all the oaths that are given for various positions. I watched the select board, um, form their board in July. There's no such oath for the chairman, so I don't know where he's coming from. But I offer that just to maybe ask him to finalize this up. Matters, I'm sorry.
Are you postponing that then, because he's not here?
Well, I I gave my report, and we'll see what he says when he comes back in. Does everybody understand the issue? He said, when you're appointed a chairman, you need to take a chairman's oath, and I can't find any such thing. No other requirement for any such thing. Matters not reasonably anticipated, the chair, nine thirty, Ed, you've got a couple minutes, don't, don't, uh.
Christina, could I ask you to, uh, read the, uh, the motion by the board last meeting regarding the solar farm?
Yes, I have that. This is from the draft, I'm, um, true.
We haven't approved those meeting minutes, but. What are you reading? What page, huh?
I'm on page five of nineteen, um, you guys all have this in your packet. This is I, line item G. Uh, can the planning board please review the, okay, um, the motion verbatim is, uh, from Bill Holman's, I'll make a motion, let's go back and let's review. The motion is an amended friendly amendment, all I would like to do is put it on the table so we can look, we can all look at it. Uh, for the board to review internally, not to do a full bylaw review. That is the verbatim of the motion.
Also, in the discussion, I said I will go find the redlined version. And that's what I presented tonight as the, it's not really a redline version, but it's the revisions. And that's what was the article five of June twelfth meeting.
Right, well, the motion, the motion wasn't specific to article five, as, uh, Alice, you were wondering if it was specific to article five.
Well, let's go back and read it, Ed, it said not to do a full bylaw review.
Yep.
That meant we were gonna review the revisions.
Right.
Which is what Kendall said he had just gone through, we went through the revisions. So this is an accurate motion. And it was targeted, and it was targeted to.
References, just article five.
It didn't say article five, but it said not a full bylaw review.
Right.
And if you listen to the tape, you'll hear me say, I'll bring in a redlined version.
I take exception to the fact that, uh, I have a small, five-minute presentation to make regarding that. And I get tabled or put aside to that, yet yet you, uh, cause you're concerned about time in the meeting, but can spend twenty minutes on, uh, on record, on electronic record keeping.
I have it on the agenda.
Electronic record keeping's not on the agenda.
Budget, the budget item.
The what?
For the budget. Now, Ed, I'll, I'll take, excuse me, Ed, I wanna be fair, cause I know you're not gonna be here in next month. I will poll the board and ask them, do they wanna hear your presentation? If they do, I'm willing to sit here. Is anybody interested in hearing the presentation?
I don't even, I don't even, I don't even care to give it at this time, I just want you to know.
Wait a minute, Ed, I'm making an offer, and now you refuse to take the offer.
Well, I got.
Wanna make it? Alice, do you wanna hear it? Kendall, do you wanna hear it? If you, if you wanna hear it, I'll stay.
Not this late, but I will if the others do.
No.
Sure.
Well.
You don't have to. The other, uh.
Well, wait a minute, Ed, let's go on the record then. We're offering to have you make your presentation.
I hear your offer, and I'm saying I'm not gonna do it at, uh, twenty minutes or ten, but thank you.
Okay, and remember, you didn't give it to us ahead of time and get on the agenda. If that would, that would be helpful.
I didn't do that because that solar farm was on the agenda.
Not a presentation by Ed, uh, Ed, uh, planter. So, I'm sorry, but we're making an offer now, and let the record show, you're not
The other thing that I didn't really anticipate is, uh, I think at the last two or three, um, planning board meetings, um, there had been an attempt to try and and vote in the associate member. And since the last meeting, we've had, uh, town council's opinion regarding that issue on whether it was done appropriately by the select board, and, uh, and it was deemed that it was. Why, uh, why would that not be on the agenda this evening to, uh, to move forward and, uh, and seat the, uh, and seat the, uh, associate member?
I'll look at the other board members here, it's a good question. I don't perceive any action needed. He's the guy, he's on.
I'm hap- I'm happy to make a quick motion, if you like.
Well, just a second, let me figure out if I'm in the, in the position or not. I read the letter, and Francois, you are the, uh, associate member. By decree, I don't have any say on that, and it's fine with me. It was never about you, it was about how do we get a member appointed in a manner that we're all solid with it, and it doesn't expose the planning board to an appeal. If something in the future about one of the, the role that you would play, and you voted, and the applicant said, oh, that gentleman that voted wasn't appointed properly, he could appeal it. And when you appeal something and you lose the appeal, all the conditions of the permit get wiped away. And that's a terrible price to pay for the town. So I wanted to make sure you came on in a legitimate manner. And it has been declared legitimate by the town lawyer, and I res- I respect it, and I'm happy that we have it. And you're welcome, hi, congratulations, you're on the planning board as a associate member.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and I do mean it, welcome.
Appreciate it. Uh, I do have a couple of quick questions, uh, on meetings, uh, the end of the meeting, the matters that are not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Alice, I think last time you presented a, uh, request to have a mini open session at the very beginning, where does that stand?
Oh.
You should direct your questions to the chair.
To the chair.
Well, I'm sorry, I I just, she's the one who brought it, I'm just trying to ascertain that that's what she, she brought up as a, as as a, as a question. So I'm, I'm asking it as a, as a, as a, as a follow-up on the matters of her, of, uh, of, uh, of the matter of what happened the last time, as to whether or not this is something that is still being considered or not.
Alright, can I answer it on the chair?
You can, you can answer it?
Alright. Alice has made a very, uh, good, uh, recommendation in writing. I did not implement it tonight, because no one has seen it or reviewed that application, including the people who come from, through the door as the public. So you can't implement her, uh, recommendation before it's offered to the board and moved by the board as a, something we're gonna do. Uh, it consists of allowing people to speak at the beginning for a set period of time, much, much as she described in the last meeting. And, um, she gave it to us in writing, we'll consider it for the next meeting. I'd like to consider it, uh, tonight, but I, I didn't think we were prepared to. And, um, we can, we can consider it at the next meeting, and let the board speak. If it's accepted, it's accepted, if it's rejected, it's rejected. Now, that's my little speech, I'll let Alice finish it up.
Do you have to have it in writing by, the request has to be in writing by someone?
No, the.
No, no.
I don't know how.
Alice, maybe you could explain the detail if you want.
The detail, this is a process, I didn't invent it, we used it at the Watch Houston Regional School Committee, I think many boards use it. When you come in and you sign up, you sign your name in attendance, you indicate whether you wanna speak. And then before the meeting, that list of attendees who wish to speak is given to the chair. And the chairman, chairman sets aside five to ten minutes, he decides in advance for a, now I wanna get this right, for a public session, for an open session. For an open session, and during that open session, people are called by the chair that have put their name on, they don't submit anything in writing, but they have to sign that they wanna speak. And they're given a time, a time limit. So, you know, the chair opens up the meeting and says, we have five minutes for an open session, there's five people that wanna speak. I'm gonna limit the speaking time to one minute, and then there are certain ground rules, you address the whole board and, um, and then you don't get a reply from the board, you take everything under, you know, we're, we're just listening. And you take it under advisement, is what you would say, till the end of the meeting, and then that list is taken up. And then that list is taken up as one of the last agenda items to see what an appropriate response to those questions raised were. It's a commonly used technique.
Yeah.
And what it does is keep the board.
It's been used by many boards in town, but it's a lot more informal.
Right, and well, I know sometimes you do have to.
What is more informal? The process is a lot more informal.
What process? Her process?
It's basically the same process.
Open session that the select board has, they just have a time slot at the beginning of their meetings. And anyone can come and speak during that time slot. That's a lot more formal, but maybe that's better.
They don't have a list that they start with? You don't indicate you wanna speak? I don't know.
And it's worked, you know, it's worked, uh, I I had it when I was on the finance committee. It allows any, anybody to come and and.
You could still have the time limit on. The only advantage of having people check that they want is then it gives the chairman some idea of how many people wanna speak. But anyway, and then you can continue it if people weren't reached to the end of the meeting, people, cause this is really long, but wanna sit. And you can continue it there. But it keeps the whole meeting from being derailed in the first ten minutes. So.
Well, each board certainly can do it differently.
Is it, and if I may ask a, a follow up question on this here. Uh, I think it's a great idea. I think it makes a lot of sense, especially time limiting it. Because we don't wanna be here until ten or five like we might be tonight again. Uh, and and I appreciate the time that you are putting because you're all volunteers into this here. Uh, is there any reason why we cannot just go ahead and do this here, starting with the next meeting? I mean, we have a quorum. Is there no reas- is there a reason why we cannot just go ahead and institute this here right now?
Well, I would, I would like to, uh.
And pass a motion is what I'm basically asking.
Well, it it, uh, there are pros and cons to it. And I think it deserves a discussion, um, with the full board, cause we'll all have to live with it. That's my opinion. And that's what I've exercised tonight. I didn't put it on the agenda because I, I thought it's unfair, it's unfair to spring it on the public. You know, I can't, I can't implement it tonight. Uh, we could implement it in, in, uh, February if we had a discussion in January. But there are some cons to it. The select board have an open session because the town charter requires that they have an open session. They're not doing it out of any reason because they're required. Uh, and they have structured it a way. They have structured it, and that's their way. We have always been pretty democratic. If somebody wants to speak, if we're not running till eleven o'clock, they get a chance to speak. Just as tonight, we offered you a, a, a second chance. Um, and you have raised this issue many times, this whole concept of a solar overlay. And we've, frankly, that question has been asked and answered many times, all the way back to Tom Bracco last year. So, we're less formal, I think. We're also not like a town policy setting board like the select board is. We don't, we don't take complaints in general, you know? And you, if you want a solar overlay, you're perfectly, uh, capable of going off and developing it. Put it on a citizen's petition or something, you know, that, it's a lot of work. Tom Bracco estimated it at, uh, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars.
Let me stick with that, sorry, just getting late. The question I I raised was, was, was supposed to whether or not you're going to put a, a motion tonight.
I'm telling you. February is probably the earliest, yeah.
Here we, okay, and that's fine.
If if it even happens. We don't just, if we don't just stay to our informed.
So we wanna have a discussion amongst the full board and have a vote on that. And that's, and that's fair.
Personally, I would like Craig and Bill to look at and see whether they like it or not.
And that's fine. I'm, just a question that was asked. The other question I have, and and again, I'm trying to minimize the, the impact this has on, on you all. But several times it's been brought up, uh, that things are not in the agenda, so therefore they cannot be discussed. I find it very difficult, I as a, as a citizen, and hopefully in the future as a, as a member of the board, to understand what the protocol and the procedure is for adding, uh, items into the agenda. And I think it's important for us to have clarity in how to do that. I understand that this is managed through you. Uh, and that it is published at least, uh, forty eight hours in advance, uh, and then put on, 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 on the town website. But, uh, I think there's a question in terms of how do items get added into the agenda? And I think, for example, Ed, uh, was very, uh, much thinking that because of its informality, he had the protocol, had the ability to, to present something here tonight. And obviously it was not the case. So I'm asking, uh, if there is potential ways to clarify how to get things put into the agenda. And I don't need an answer tonight, but at some point in time, it will be good for individuals like myself who come here as a, as a, as a citizen. As well as those people who are, who are watching, to understand how it is that they can present things into the agenda.
They can present them numerous ways. One is to provide it to Christina. And, um, I want to say that the informality here is when people address questions to the chair, they get responded to. When people say, I wanna make a presentation, or I wanna have a slideshow, or I wanna show a movie or something, that's different. That's not a question. That's a presentation. And so, just as this gentleman made a presentation tonight, he came onto the agenda. He called me up and said, I wanna be on the agenda. I'm sending my engineer in here to make a discussion or presentation about that site. Presentation, I think, requires that it be on the agenda. A question from the floor is always responded to. Now, tonight, I, I hear this being asked kind of because, um. Ed had difficulty being able to speak. Well, that was a presentation, and that's where my, my line got drawn, kind of. I said, well, if we're gonna make a presentation, I gotta get the budget done. It's due December twentieth, and we're not having another meeting. So, I gotta do the business of the, of the board. Anything else is extra. And Ed, like I say, you, there was nothing tonight that was brought up as either a question or a presentation. That wasn't either allowed or allowed and not presented. So, there is no issue tonight, as I see it.
I'm, I'm not asking for justification on how you, how you acted. I'm just simply asking because I don't think that there's clarity in that.
There is.
And I think it would be very good to understand how to get things onto the agenda.
The op.
And distinguishing what, what are items that need to be brought to it as, uh, as part of the open agenda.
Well, I'd like all items brought, you know, cause it's hard to run a meeting if there's new items always being introduced. But the open meeting law describes how to set an agenda. There's a guideline for, for it under the, I believe, Secretary of State. And there's a means by which items can get added. Uh, example, tonight, there was an agenda. It was published forty eight hours ahead of time. And we added an item after the forty eight hour gate closed.
I saw that.
And you can do that.
I saw that.
That's perfectly legal. You can do that. So there are protocols.
Sorry.
And you can look them up. You can study.
If I hear you correctly, then the protocol at this point in time, the one that I concretely heard was is to communicate a request for the addition of an item into the agenda, uh, with Christina.
I didn't finish. She would report that to me.
Yeah.
And then I have the ultimate, is it on the agenda or not? It's the chairman's decision to set the agenda, per, uh, Robert's rules.
Just a question on the, all, all other boards I've sat on, at the end of the agenda, have an old business, new business? Or somebody could, it's just a place where these kinda questions default to. Somebody can stand up, but you could say, I would like to. You know, this opens up the discussion, lets the board decide whether it wants to be discussed, you know, as opposed to, you could say, no, I'm not gonna put it on the agenda. But I will put it on an item of new business and let the board decide if we wanna hear it.
I mean, old business.
New or old business, either one.
Be glad to do that. I, I, I've seen that on other agendas and I'm perfectly willing to.
Because I, I think like what, tonight, one of the things is, you know how Todd Miller came here prepared to talk about his signage last time?
No.
That wasn't what he was here to talk about?
He never announced why he was here. I brought up signage after he left.
Oh, I thought that's what he was here for.
I have no, I have no, no knowledge of why he was here.
Cause I was gonna say, if it, if it was something that got overlooked, I would bring it up under old business. It needs to be considered and it could go back on for next.
After he left, I said, gee, I wish he had stayed because I wanted to talk about signage. And I mentioned how he and I agree. The signage law is not very good. And Ed commented that it was made by a business group, and we had that little discussion, but that was after he left.
I didn't hear that discussion.
Please, after he left.
Oh, okay, well, anyway. I was gonna put on, would it be old business or new business?
I think that's an excellent idea. Why don't we?
To, to just consider discussing signage at the next agenda.
Yeah. I think the select board do that old, they have some old business topics down below. We can do that.
So I'd like to do that for next conference.
I would. Okay, great, no problem.
Good night. Good night. Thanks for coming.
Good night.
Francois.
I also had a, Bill Holman talked to me today to tell me he was sick. He was actually looking for your number, Tom, which I didn't have, which I shouldn't have.
In the book. I got an old copper line.
I know. So Christina says she will distribute everybody's contact information so we can talk to each other, cause it's hard. Some people have cell phones. So if that's okay with you. And he also raised the issue of if you're going to be, if you know you're, if you're sick at the last minute.
Yeah. Probably best to text me.
What's the policy?
Yes, you do, Ed.
Call.
Probably best to text the chair and/or me, and then, there you go.
Does a text work? Okay.
Well, it works for me, but I don't know about Tom. Does a text work for you?
Text works for me if you use my cellphone. My copper line doesn't do that.
Yeah, won't get a text. Yes, I understand. But what I'll do is I'll circulate an email asking for everybody's, um, land and cellphone numbers. And then I will take all that data in, make up a sheet, and send it all out to everybody and then free it.
Right, maybe you could just put a note on it if you have to.
Text.
If you're not attending at the last minute, text Tom at.
Yep, there you go.
So. And then his last thing he raised, which I feel like is probably maybe one of these, maybe you want to consider it. Is he says there is interest in town, and he's not disclosing names, in marijuana farm. That's not the right name perhaps. What do you call it? The marijuana, growing cultivation of marijuana. And he pointed out that the town has a right to assess taxes. But I believe it's only on the retail sale, and I don't know whether the person growing it would be interested in selling it. But he thinks that we should dis, he's question, he thinks we should discuss it. So I'm just relaying what he said.
I attended a July twenty third select board meeting. When our former chairman, Tom Bracco, went to the select board. And it's on video and you can see it.
Okay.
He brought up the fact that the select board has the capability of taxing. And he said that if they don't establish the tax criteria or protocol or whatever they do, if the select board doesn't do that. Someone could come to town and start a marijuana facility and be exempt from the futurly imposed tax. Is futurly a word? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
A tax imposed sometime later.
Right.
They'd be exempt. So he encouraged the select board to establish the.
One to three percent.
They made a motion and they said, we're gonna tax them. And I don't know the details, but if you watched July twenty third or twenty second select board meeting, you can see that happen. It is not the job of the planning board to establish a tax.
That's what I told.
It's not our authority. We're not.
I told Bill. He may, I, I told him that, but he may not be aware that selectmen are, it's on their radar screen and then.
And, and I think they're, they're working on it. I don't know exactly the status, but it was brought to their attention by Tom and, and, uh. They responded with a motion and I don't remember the motion.
Okay, that's fine. I'll relay that to Bill.
Yeah, we, we do fees which are not taxes.
Right.
And when we collect the fee, we can keep them.
Right, and my understanding is you can only tax the retail part of it anyway. You can't tax the cultivation.
I think it's complicated. It's pretty complicated.
We'll leave it to the, our brothers and sisters on the select board.
I, uh, I have one last motion. I was looking through our bylaws and we are, um, the, the general bylaws or the, or maybe even the, uh. How do they call it? The charter says the business of the town will be run according to a set of rules called meeting time or town meeting time. And I went and got the book out of the library and I'm looking through it. And it just is not applicable to committees and boards. Well, it's applicable, applicable to committees under the town meeting concept, but it's not applicable to an independently elected board.
True.
So I go to the Secretary of State's office and look in his website, and he says many towns use town meeting time and Robert's rules. You can use both in the same town.
Yep.
However, you have to have them established by a motion and you have to say that, um, well, you say just what the, uh. What the town says. General bylaw.
It's article one.
Yeah, it's in here somewhere. The town says it very effectively. And I just need to change it a little bit and we can. Gee, where was it? Oh, I'm on page two of the general bylaws, chapter two, town meetings. Now, this is town meetings. The procedure and conduct of the business meetings of the town not herein provided for shall be governed by Town Meeting Time, a handbook of parliamentary law. So far as they are applicable and are not inconsistent with the bylaws of the town. And I think that's right. And we should. Town meeting time is a good book for town meetings. However, for boards like the select board and the planning board and the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission. We really should be using all the bylaws, of course, but underneath them, we should be operating with the Robert's rules of, uh, order. And I'd like to make a motion tonight, just to clarify things. The motion reads, resolved, that the rules contained in the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order newly revised shall govern this meeting. In all cases to which they are applicable and in which they are not inconsistent with any special rules or of order. The town, uh, the, the meeting may adopt, meaning this meeting, not the town meeting. Let me read that again, cause I screwed it up. Resolved, that the rules contained in the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order newly revised shall govern this meeting, meaning the planning board meeting. In all cases to which they are applicable and in which they are not inconsistent with any special rules of order the meeting may adopt. For instance, they're, they're kind of the, the foundation and bylaws and state laws and everything rule. And when there's a question of how we do something, you follow the Roberts and say, oh, yeah, in order to make this kind of a motion, you have to do this and that. Now, I'm not strict follower, but we have to have something or we'll, we'll be arm wrestling. I mean, we have to have some basis of order. So I'd like a second on that motion and see if we adopt it.
I'll second that.
All right.
I, I wanna discuss just very briefly, cause it's really like.
Sure, please. Yeah.
Robert's rules is, it's like the gold, the gold standard of how to run meetings. But.
It's pretty good.
If you lock yourself into it, you know, there are people that come in that are parliamentary people. And there are places where seconds are required and aren't required and subsidiary motions and complicated motions. So you, you don't wanna lock yourself in to having to follow every rule in that book, or it'll be a worse.
Okay.
So.
Very good comment.
I think a motion that would say, that says, the planning board meetings shall be governed by Robert's rules.
How about generally?
Generally.
Generally governed.
That's the exact word, but that's the concept. The concept is you don't wanna say, well, that.
Yeah.
This is a subsidiary, you know, the, the motion can't be amended. It can be very difficult.
It's too strict, cause I don't know them inside and out.
Yeah, they're very.
Um.
They're not inconsistent with town meeting. A town meeting just doesn't go as far to apply to.
It does, you can't find what you want in there. It's, it's meant for town meeting.
I just wouldn't lock it in quite as hard, quite as, quite as much as that. What, read, read how he read it again. Read it back. Read it again.
He has, he has it ver.
Maybe.
I'm sorry. Let me, let me.
And I'll make a friendly amendment maybe or something.
Yes, I need one, because I don't wanna lock it in.
Right.
I don't think any of us know enough to follow it and we'll be tripping over it all the time.
Right, right.
I don't wanna do that.
Not only that, but you did say meet, this meeting as opposed to planning board meetings, cause otherwise you're just voting for it to be used tonight.
No, it's not, well, I, no, that's, that's not, um. It's not my intention at all. It's, it's to adopt it until we don't adopt it.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't understand that.
But let me, let me clarify, cause if you didn't understand it, nobody else would either. I'm not having done a good job. The rules contained, that the rules contained in the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order newly revised. Why don't I give you a copy of that, so you don't have to. I'm sorry, I didn't bring, anybody else want a copy? I can make some on the machine.
No, that's all right. I'll just take a copy once. No, that's alright, I'll just take a copy once it's done.
Yeah.
I can write on this one, right?
Please. And by this meeting, I meant the planning board meeting forever. Let's step back. Is this a wise motion at all? Or should we just informally agree that, um, we, we try to generally follow Robert's Rules? 'Cause we are gonna get tangled up in our shoelaces here.
There are a lot of very specific rules within Robert's Rules, I'm pretty sure you guys don't want to follow.
Oh, the book's an inch thick.
Not only that-
It's four hundred and some pages to begin with, the latest edition.
I've read only about probably a hundred of them, so yeah, I'll tell you, you don't wanna be following all of them, but also, I don't have, uh, the eleventh edition and I'd have to buy one in order to follow that motion.
No, we're, we're, it's not my intention to, to tie our hands and feet together, so we can't do anything unless we follow this book. It's my intention that we rely on something to avoid chaos.
Okay, why don't we do it this way, why don't you say, "Resolved that the rules contained in the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order newly revised shall be used as a guide for planning board meetings."
There you go.
A gu- a guide is a significantly slippery word that we don't get talked about in the details.
Right.
Can you read that again for me?
That the rules contained in the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order newly revised shall govern, or shall be used as a guide for planning board meetings.
Do we need to say guide only?
No, shall be used as a guide for our planning board meetings.
For- Planning board meetings. And then do we pick it up in all cases to which they are applicable and which they're not consistent with blah, 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 or do we just cross that out? Just stop at meetings?
I think you should just, could just stop at meetings.
Alright. Nice and simple.
'Cause I don't think there would be inconsistencies.
Well, if there are, we all, we already know-
And it's only a guide.
That state, state law trumps Robert's Rules, our bylaws trump Robert's Rules, you know?
Oh, you think I wrote it out so you can read it, wait a minute.
Oh, no, here, I got this.
I have one here, let me read it out loud.
Yep.
"Resolved that the rules contained in the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order newly revised shall be used as a guide for planning board meetings, period." Strike the rest of the paragraph.
Perfect.
Okay, I second that question.
Well, that was a very good suggestion, Alice. You've been through this, uh-
Uh, yeah.
Parliamentaryness. 'Cause we had a person come in here last week that was citing parliamentary things and, and we, we have never adopted that, you know, so-
Yeah, it's, it's, it's good to look at them, it's a good guide, it does give you lots of good pointers, but- But you can get really tangled up.
Yeah, you can get all tied up. Well, thank you very much, great addition to the, or subtraction.
Do we vote for that?
You're right, she's gonna come back with a copy, we'll vote.
Okay, and then we'll-
Actually, what I should do is ask for a second.
Second. Also second.
Alice, Alice seconded.
Let me start, I move that we adopt that motion.
Yes, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All, aye.
Super. Well, it's ten after ten, yeah.
I don't think we, I think we skipped the things we had to skip for our absent people and we made some progress.
Yeah, I hope the absent people are listening at home, sitting in their sick beds, watching our video. And we welcome them back next time, uh, it'll be-
Need a motion to adjourn here?
It'll be January.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.